I got two of them. Melanie, you got one of those?
Yeah.
I thought, you know.
You know, I know. I'm pretty confident.
She was actually polite to me.
Well, you get it in by the deadline and give her busy.
She knew damn well, she had to look at my clothes. You know what I mean? She knew damn well. I had a coat this big. The other kids had burgers.
Okay, six o'clock. Are you guys ready?
And she was right there. And had to sell it in the.
Hooray.
I'd like to welcome you to the September 25th City Council meeting. Would you please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
All right. Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Could we get the roll call, please?
Councilmember Brigham?
Here.
Vice Mayor Russell?
Here.
Councilmember Walter?
Here.
Councilmember Bagby?
Present.
Mayor Paula?
Here.
And our student liaison appears to be absent.
Okay, thank you. Any conflict of interest declarations from councilmembers?
I will leave the dais for the cannabis.
Okay, so, Councilmember Brigham is going to leave when item number eight comes up. Accuse herself, okay? Anybody else? Okay. Agenda review, regular session. Any changes and/or deletions? City manager, anything?
Mayor, no changes.
Okay. Councilmembers, nothing. Okay. Okay, we'll move on now to public comment. Any person wishing to speak to the City Council on any item not listed on the agenda may do so at this time. Members of the public have the right to speak on any item on the council agenda during that item. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the City Council is not authorized to consider issues or take action on any item not listed on the agenda. Each person wishing to speak must come up to the podium when advised, and there's a booklet there if you would please print your name and sign it so the clerk has it for the record, and speak directly into the microphone. Each speaker will be limited to three minutes and is limited to speaking once under public comment. Would anybody like to address the City Council on any item not on the agenda? Yes.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council, city staff, chief. Good to see you. Thank you for your time. Sean Bobey, Cloverdale. I wanted to just take a quick minute and update you on our September 15th Clean River Project. Clean River Alliance asked that I take a few minutes and just share with you some of the highlights. On Saturday, September 15th, we had over 30 volunteers from all over Cloverdale. A lot of the kids from the high school, some of the Kiwanis kids, all came out and we spent from about 8:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. traversing the river from one end of Cloverdale to the other. At the end of the day in Cloverdale, we ended up with about 3,500 pounds of trash that was collected. From Ukiah to the Lower River on Saturday, they were able to collect over 30,000 pounds of trash in just one day. Of that 3,500 pounds that was collected here in Cloverdale, about 1,500 of it was staged by our homeless population. We had been going out regularly on Fridays and giving them garbage bags and asking them to pick up their own stuff. Once it was bagged, we'll come along, pick the bags up, and get the bags out of the way. So, they are stepping up a little bit. Couple days prior to that event, or I'm sorry, previous to that event, we had Cloverdale Police Department come out. I think they ended up picking up a couple of guys. Petty theft issues, but that seemed to kind of help get their attention. We also had the Sonoma County Sheriff out on Friday before the Big River Cleanup. So, that too seemed to kind of motivate some guys and get them headed in the right direction. We wanted to make sure that we acknowledged Bob Cox from the Cloverdale Rotary who spent a very long day out there in the sunshine, making sure everybody got to where they were supposed to go. Did a great job. So, the Clean River Alliance would very much like to express our gratitude to Bob Cox at the Cloverdale Rotary. Cloverdale High School, everybody that came out that day, we appreciate the help. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for coordinating that as well. Okay. Would anyone else like to address the City Council on any item not on the agenda? Okay, yes. Come up, please, and sign the book and then state your name for the record.
My name is Jared Giammona, and I'm here to speak on behalf of Garden Society. I've known Carly Warner now for over a year just through being in the same industry. And throughout that time, I've known Garden Society to be a very professional and thoughtful company, especially when it comes to their community. And they are very big on educational piece as far as creating awareness for locals and the general public when it comes to the industry as well. So, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Would anyone else like to address the City Council on anything not on the agenda? Keep in mind cannabis will be on the agenda under item number eight, so I ask that you hold your comments on that until we get to that item. Okay, seeing none, I'm going to close the public comment and we'll move on to, we have one presentation this evening. It's a presentation from the Sonoma County Regional Parks regarding recent community outreach efforts and approved Parks Ballot Measure M.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. I'd like to formally introduce Bert Whitaker. Bert Whitaker is the Director of Parks and Recreation for Sonoma County, and we're pleased to have the Director here. His presentation tonight is on a measure that's going to be on the November ballot, referred to as Measure M, or Parks For All. One thing, and I'm sure Dennis is going to cover it, that I just want to make a particular note of it that's identified in your packet, is the funding that this measure will provide for parks in Sonoma County, but in particular parks, funding for parks within the City of Cloverdale. Page 11 of your report identifies as part of the tax revenue that would be generated by this measure that the City of Cloverdale would receive over a 10-year life, $963,415, which is, if you do the math, is about $96,000 a year. Obviously, that's a vital source of funding that could be provided if this measure is approved. So, without any further ado, just while our Assistant City Manager gets the screen down, if you want to take a moment, Bert, and introduce yourself and feel free to.
Thank you, David.
Proceed with the presentation.
And I hope you guys can hear me okay. I'm going to be doing like a squat.
You could pull that, that comes out.
Does it come out?
Yeah, you could. There you go. Yeah, much better. Thank you.
You're welcome. Good evening, Mayor, City Council, and staff. Thank you so much for having me this evening. And Bert Whitaker, I'm the Director of Sonoma County Regional Parks. And I just want to take a moment and just sort of reflect. I feel very lucky. I discovered Sonoma County in 1995. I'm not from this area. Stumbled across the Russian River of all places. And I just wanted to quickly, slight tangent here, applaud the Clean River Alliance and the Russian River Keeper. I mean, it's just fabulous to see that the folks are getting out there and working hard on the trash issues that we are suffering on our watershed. About 10 minutes this evening, I'm going to run you through kind of Measure M, a quick touch base on the status of our regional parks in Sonoma County, and certainly here to answer any questions or share any discussion you would like to have around parks needs. Our regional park system has grown quite a bit. Today, we are at 56 regional parks, trails, and preserves throughout the county. We are managing and operating about 11,000 acres of parkland, 150 miles of trails. Our community enjoys programs for youth, seniors. We've engaged in many bilingual programs, and we are well on our way to providing extensive summer camps throughout the county during the summer season. I'd be remiss if I didn't take a Parks moment. It's Tuesday, it's a beautiful day, feels like summer again. But think about our parks. And I have a 13-year-old at home. She likes to look at the iPhone way too much. Trying to get her off of that, and I'm taking her out in the parks. We have a whole generation here that needs to get out. As fun as Pokemon was a few years ago, it was a little bit weird, but it still is a continual challenge to get kids out and have them having those outdoor experiences of healthy recreation. Parks are the places where you go for a walk to take the stress off after the end of the day. It's where you go to celebrate with your family, with your community, affordable places where just about anybody can have access to. We keep ourselves fit and healthy, out there recreating and climbing some of the mountains that surround us. And ultimately, we're living in a time where climate change could not be more real, and we're seeing indicators of it in our daily lives. Fire and flood is the future in Sonoma County, and it's time to take our watersheds to a whole new level of resiliency. On the regional park system, I threw out some numbers, but essentially, these metrics are from the last five years. The acreage has nearly doubled in size. This is attributed to a lot of acquisitions through our Ag and Open Space District and a lot of hard work for folks to get out there and get these lands open. We're experiencing over 5.4 million visits per year in the system, and that is a dramatic increase, and that's been increasing 10% to 15% per year over the last number of years. Camping, how many folks camp? Any campers up here? Yeah, good luck getting a camp spot. Our occupancy rates are tracking right along with what we're seeing in our hotel occupancy rates, at about 80%. The particular metric we have up here is from the wettest winter in recorded history, and it exceeded all records on our things. It's great. It's given a little bit of extra revenue to invest in the system, but we're also seeing impact, extra services we have to provide with that much use. Our park membership program, any park members up here? Melanie, good, good. Got the credit card machine with me. We can catch you after the meeting, get you set up. We are up to 28,000 park members, and I'll be honest, that program has grown significantly in the last decade, and really, those dollars all go back in the park system, and that's providing these basic daily services. This is rangers, this is a staff member, this is trash cans and cleaning restrooms. But it really has not created the dollars to reinvest back in the system. We'll talk more about that with Measure M. But as we see more and more use, we see more and more impacts. As we have more acres, we have more lands to steward. Our 51-year-old park system is not getting any younger. And just on this slide, I like to just sort of give people a sense of what the county is operating out there, just sort of on the infrastructure side. But believe it or not, our regional park system consists of 179 buildings, 54 bridges, 36 sports fields. And does anyone want to take a stab at guessing how many drinking faucets?
No.
There are 289 drinking faucets, of which the majority of them work, but it's very, very stressful going through five years of drought with leaky plumbing, trying to manage that many drinking faucets. But our deferred maintenance is increasing as time goes on, as well as our deferred stewardship of our lands. Certainly, our regional parks were not immune from our wildfire event last year. The devastating fires impacted six of our regional parks. About 2,600 acres of the system burned. Places like Shiloh Ranch and Hood Mountain Regional Park were not the first places to burn. Those were actually the places that were burning while the Cal Fire and others were protecting our communities. When the fires were happening, we stopped everything we were doing and started taking care of our community and our lands, and that was a big push. As many of you may be aware, regional parks was in front of the voters in 2016 with a measure known as Measure J. It was not successful. It received 65.3% of the popular vote. It was 1,100 votes short of generating about $11 million per year to reinvest in the system. Knowing this, the fires hit, we had been talking with all nine cities before the fires for an extensive period of time, and many of you, about parks' needs. January came around, we decided to do a public survey poll. We were able to secure some outside funding and wanted to just take a look and see what the public thought about regional parks. And we posed some questions, and here's a few of the highlights from that survey poll. But as you can see, the numbers were very supportive, a ton of support in the community around the park system as a whole, the needs that it has, a need for additional funding, and certainly a unanimous agreement that post-fire, the parks have even more needs and new needs. This encouraged us to do more work with the community, and we started doing outreach, and we're able to actually do some pretty aggressive mailings in March and April to further educate the community about the needs of the system, but also to get some feedback from the community about what they thought they would like to see invested in. These results actually are from about 100,000 survey cards. Hopefully, some of you received them in the mail. And essentially, the community came back to us with their profile and their priorities, and it really did track along with what we were seeing from the public survey poll, this very strong desire to take care of what we have, take care of the existing facilities, protecting our wildlife habitat, our natural resources, and really saw a very similar overarching level of support for all of these types of things, that folks wanted to see investment into park spaces. And really, with all the positive results, we started doing presentations throughout the community. Several of you have been to presentations that I've delivered, talking about the system as a whole. To date, we've done over 80 presentations, talked about over 2,000 individuals with similar information. And another sort of fun side tangent here, we got to keep it fun, it's parks, right? We asked people in opening a question with those surveys, so what is your favorite park? Anybody want to dare guess the favorite park?
Howarth.
Say it again?
Howarth.
Howarth, number four. Anybody want to guess number one?
I read my packet, so.
Spring Lake Regional Park came in number one. Edged Out Doran Beach, very, very popular place. And actually, Helen Putnam Regional Park down near Petaluma came in third, and as I said, Howarth came in fourth. What was also very interesting is sort of looking at that data set, is we sort of looking at the zip codes and where people's favorite park was, and it really reinforced this view of regional parks are for the community as a whole. And we had so many folks that may live in Santa Rosa, or they live in Cloverdale, and their favorite park may be all the way across the county. But interestingly enough, out of the 56 parks, 48 of the 56 were listed, and a significant number is being somebody's favorite park. And that's really good to know, that all of our facilities, actually, they are just so special, and they're all unique in their own way. Measure M was put together through a lot of hard work and diligence with the numerous stakeholders. Just the facts on Measure M is it would be a 1/8 cent countywide sales tax. It would generate 11.5 millions annually and would provide funds for our regional, as well as our city parks. And it would certainly ensure voter intent with Citizens Oversight Committee that we developed, if it's successful. This is a high-level view at the expenditure plan, and essentially, category one on this expenditure plan is the dollars that would be divided amongst the nine cities in our county. And as it stands right now, those dollars would be distributed on a per capita basis. Categories two, three, and four represents 2/3 of the dollars, and 2/3 of those dollars would be invested into our county regional parks in the three categories. And I'm just going to do just a real quick overview of those. But essentially, it's on the regional park side, it's these three areas. It's public safety, access, and natural resources. On public safety, we're talking about really deferred and ongoing maintenance of our facilities. They're 51, they're not getting any newer, and many of them are turning 25, 35, and 45 years old. They were built with grant dollars, and in fact, they were low bid projects in many instances, and really were not built to be long-term improvements. Our sports fields are in dismal condition, our playgrounds are old, and our picnic areas aren't meeting the needs of the new trends we're seeing out there in the community with larger groups wanting together and multi-generational gatherings. Our recreation and health programs, we're proud to offer what we do offer, but we need to do more. Being a relatively rural county, we're seen in many ways throughout parts of the county as that recreation provider, and we've really upped our game significantly in the last five years, but we need to continue doing more, getting people out on the land and giving them those firsthand experiences. In the category of access, we're talking about approving our existing trails. We have so many trails in the system where we just literally dug a hole next to the existing ranch road, and we put a sign and said, hey, that's a great trail. The problem is they're really not that great a trails. In many instances, they're not very satisfactory to walk on, and in more instances, they are not good for water quality and all the natural habitat protections, and they're not that sustainable. They require a good bit of maintenance. Our bike path connections throughout the community are really not as far along as certainly I would like them to see, but these dollars are meant to continue work on connecting our Class 1 trails throughout the county. Our California Coastal Trail, our Russian River Trail have got a long ways to go, and we see more work can be done there. And certainly, there are existing Open Space District lands that are owned by the public that are not open for public access, that we would see, we would envision Measure M allowing us to get those open and get people out there. And this is places like Carrington Ranch out at the coast, several properties in the Sonoma Valley area, as well as a few others. And certainly, programs that engage the underserved, we would see this as an investment to continue our work there. We've made a lot of inroads into the southwest Santa Rosa community. We are working in the Springs community a little bit, but there are other communities where we would really like to get in there, engage with those communities, to understand the parks that are out there, and the healthy aspects of getting out there and taking their families and using them on a regular basis. The final category, which of critical importance to regional parks, we are in our infancy of managing natural resources. About two years ago, we started a natural resources program. To date, it really has about one and a half positions assigned to it, and we see a bright future where these dollars could really invest in a responsible management of our 11,000 acres of land that we expect to be significantly larger in the coming years. But these dollars are all about fuels management, creating fuel breaks, working in prescribed fire, enhancing our game with grazing. We see a future where goats and sheep and cattle roam most of our lands. As it stands right now, about 4,000 acres of the system is being grazed. We would really like to see more of that, like 8,000 to 10,000 acres, on the more of the 80% to 90% range of the acreage. And there is a lot of work to be done restoring our Russian River watershed, as well as our Sonoma Creek watershed and our Petaluma River watersheds. Certainly, protecting our wildlife. If you look at our social media channels, it's fascinating, but that is, you know, the public is intrigued by this as they should be, but we're really learning a lot now as the climate changes about wildlife corridors. We're tracking things throughout the county in ways we've never been able to do so before, and it's fascinating science, and we would see some dollars being there to do basic things like improving our infrastructure, making those fences wildlife-friendly, educating the public about the wildlife corridors, and monitoring and bringing the dollars in from outside, from state and federal sources, to make enhancements to sustain our wildlife in the coming years. And so with that, that's kind of the overview, and I was not going to talk for too long. I want to thank you, but having done so many of these presentations, regional parks did not know what the response would be from the community. But it's been a really fascinating dialogue to get in front of folks and ask their thoughts and share information with them, and they're very appreciative, because a lot of folks don't know a lot about how we pay for our regional parks, how we fund them, and what opportunities are out there. But as I talked about this 1/8 cent sales tax with the community, continually, they're coming back to me and saying, Mr. Whitaker, we do feel this is modest, and this is something that is meaningful. We see that there's projects and dollars that can actually come in to see the things we want to see. And a lot of feedback, especially off the heels of Measure J, about how this just feels so much more inclusive and fair, including the cities and the county working together. And certainly, regional parks sees a future where, if this is successful, it will drive, as the campaign slogan says, Parks For All. This new environment, we're really talking, hopefully collaborating in a new way, and there's other exciting developments with the voters in this past June approving State Proposition 68. Some dollars will be coming into all of our cities and our county, and there'll be a whole new slew of competitive grants out there, and programs that the county, we've been very successful over the years at working with those granting agencies, and just see a massive opportunity to go and invest in the system and taking care of it, and continue a responsible expansion of these many things that have been envisioned for our community. And with that, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Questions from council? Does any council have any questions before we open it up for public?
No, they're very good.
Okay. If you could just hang loose there, and I'll see if anybody in public, would anybody like to address? Yes, please come on up. Please sign the book, state your name, and you'll have three minutes.
He's a paid staff member, so he can't be holding no signs. My name's Jim Nantel, and.
Could you sign the book, please?
Sign the book, okay.
Just so the clerk has your name for the record.
Okay, I'll do that right at the end. Is that okay?
That's fine.
So I don't hold you up. Again, my name is Jim Nantel, and I'm with the, volunteer with the campaign committee, and just wanted to urge you to support. We have a number of councilmembers who have already gone and supported Measure M. We appreciate that, and hope all of you can. I brought some signs in case anybody wants to put one in front of their house, I'd be happy to leave it with you. Just a couple of points that Bert didn't talk about is, for the public, it's important to know, what is a 1/8 of a cent mean to me? If you buy $25 new pair of shoes, you can get shoes for $25, but that's 3 cents more, this 1/8 of 1%. If you spend $100 on a taxable item, that's 12 cents more. So, when we think about sales tax, we think about, oh my God, it's 9%, that's a lot of money. We're 1/8 of 1%, so it's really a small amount, and it would go a long way in addressing the things that Bert talked about. Bert mentioned that this ballot measure, the way it is written to share the money with the cities is based on per capita, and your city is responsible for that decision. When we met with the mayor, with Gus at that time, and with Paul, who was the city manager at that time, we heard that, hey, if you go with the sales tax as a way to spread it, we're going to get a third of the money. If we go with per capita, you would get closer to $100,000. And it really stuck with us. We thought, we want to make sure that all cities can get at least close to $100,000 a year, close to over a million dollars at the end of the 10-year period. So, we appreciate the opportunity to be here and urge you to support us in any way you can. Thank you.
Thank you. So, would anybody else like to address the City Council on this item? Okay, seeing none, I'll close the public comment, bring it back to the City Council. Start with Councilmember Walter. Do you have a question?
More or less a statement. Hang on, staff, because I was singing this tune earlier this morning at a meeting we were at, and I did have a little conversation prior to our meeting here with Bert. You know, Cloverdale is really an island, and people have to work to want to come to Cloverdale. And as I look around, there's very little parks that the county folks that live in 95425 can enjoy. The Ferber Park, Vintage Meadows, City Park, that's utilized by the entire community, including those county folks. And I feel really bad asking for more money for Cloverdale, hearing the disrepair that a lot of the park systems within the county are in right now. But by the same token, Cloverdale needs a little more money. I would really like to see, instead of the demographics being limited to the 95425 that live within the city limits, I'd like to see that expand into the county as well. We just, with the mayor's assistance and Mark Raccoon, we just did a revamp of our Second Street City Park, which is in total disrepair. And I think we came to the tune of somewhere around $7 million or something to repair it. That's a lot of money for us. The million dollars will definitely help if that's where the council decides that most of the money is going to be going, but I'd like to see us getting a bigger piece of pie because of the service that we provide, Parks and Recreation, to the county folks who live in Northern California. So, if you'd just take that message back, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you for that. Any other councilmember?
I'll just add that I personally endorse the measure. I think it's a great start, and I, one of the things that we are really short on is just is a dependable source of revenue for our city parks. And I think that whatever percentage we end up with, it will help us to qualify for some matching grants as well. So, I personally am endorsing it, and I'm hoping that the council tonight will sign on as well.
Thank you for that, and.
I have one question.
Yeah, go ahead. Vice Mayor.
How come you didn't give me my sign? You're going to give the sign to the council first. I know everybody wants one, but hey, you know, there's privilege up here. You're going to leave it for us, right? Thank you. Oh, by the way, I'm not shy of asking. We really need the money. Thank you.
So, thank you for that. Two things. One is I totally support what Councilmember Walter said. I mean, our parks are utilized by all of Northern Sonoma County. There is no regional parks up this way. So, a heavy use, a lot of wear and tear on the equipment, it's not just city folks using it. And we're happy that they're able to come in and use it. We're working on a partnership with the county and the school district to upgrade the swimming pool that's owned by the county, and that's a partnership. But it's used heavily by county folks, not just city folks. So, I think it's really important, we're a little different than some of the other cities that have a lot of resources close by. You get north of Hillsburg Memorial Beach, there's nothing up this way at all that the county folks have to enjoy. So, I think that's an important message to take back. The other thing is on the open space, I noticed in the formular, it's listed out that a lot of the monies are going to go to preserve the open space district. And we just have the new Porter Creek Trails Open Space District that we're just going to be opening up. It's open now, but there's a lot of things, it's going to be a huge maintenance, it's 249-plus acres. And I guess my question is, will we qualify for some of those monies outside of the 100,000 or so per year that we're going to get to try to maintain our parks under this measure for the open space portion of that? Because they're two different creatures, as we talk about that.
If I'm understanding your question correctly, you're asking around operations and maintenance dollars for your latest preserve?
Well, in the report, it talks about invest in maintenance, safety, recreation services in Sonoma County, regional parks, trails, and open space preserves. And it lists that in number two, three, and four in the staff report on pages 22, 23. We don't have that under the number one, that talks about cities.
Thank you. Under number one, if you look at the detailed expenditure plan, it has provisions in there to steward open spaces and care for natural resources. The expenditure plan, I mean, category one is the dollars that be directed, you know, to the cities, and categories two, three, and four, that language is in there is to make it very clear that those dollars are going to the Sonoma County Regional Park system. Certainly, as you continue to grow too, we also do have, you know, a local funding source with the Agricultural Preservation Open Space District that you're very familiar with, and purchasing lands, as well as, you know, matching grant programs within the city limits for other types of things that the city can leverage. All of what we -- you know, what we certainly see is these dollars on the county side of it, as well as, I would imagine, the cities. These are dollars where, you know, one bright spot in our Prop 68, the state funds that are available, is a lot of those dollars are targeted towards reinvesting into older facilities. I'm curious to know more about the $7 million situation you have there, and have more of a sense of that, because that's the types of -- I mean, it's exactly the situation we found with the other eight cities. We've got these things that are getting old, they're quite expensive, and we've got to sort of find multiple funding sources to stream in all these things and put it together. And in fact, as you fix these maintenance issues, these serious maintenance issues, your cost to sustain the facility goes down dramatically, and that's part of our challenge at the county as well. Thank you.
Okay, anything else on that? Okay, so you are -- you're asking for a city to -- council to endorse? So you want to make a motion?
Well, it was just a presentation.
Well, no, it talks right here. Consider endorsing Measure M. It says right on the front page.
I'll take two signs.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to recommend that the city council supports Measure M, and I'd also like to recommend that our city engineer send a copy of the First Street Park to Bert so that he can take a look at what we're talking about when we say $7 million.
You have a second?
Got a second? Okay, so we have a motion by Councilmember Walter, a second by Councilmember Bagby. Any discussion on the motion?
No.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Any abstention? It's unanimous. Okay, thank you. Thank you for the presentation. Okay, moving on, we will move on to the consent calendar. All items under consent will be considered together by one action of the council unless any city council member or member of the public requests that an item be removed and considered separately. Does anybody want to pull any items? Seeing none, would any member of the public like to pull any items? Seeing none, bring it back to--
I'll move approval.
Sorry. Second.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilmember Brigham, second by Councilmember Bagby. Any discussion on the motion? Okay, get a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Brigham?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Russell?
Aye.
Councilmember Walter?
Aye.
Councilmember Bagby?
Aye.
Mayor Paula?
Aye. Okay, thank you. We have no communications, no public hearings, so we're moving on to the item number eight. And Councilmember Brigham, you're going to recuse yourself?
I am. I have to recuse myself because I have a cannabis permit in limbo at this point, and I'm also talking to a gentleman from the South Bay who is interested in the property, who is talking about a three-story multi-use business building with a laboratory. And so I need to recuse myself.
Okay. Let the record show that Councilmember Bagby is leaving the dais. Okay, can we get this moved somehow? Yeah, and the screen can go up? Oh, we got another presentation? Okay. I didn't realize that. Thank you. Leave that there. So before we start this, I just want to kind of lay out how we're going to move through this item number eight. It's going to be a lengthy item. What I'm going to ask is staff, our city attorney, our city manager, to give a complete overview of the entire presentation. At the end of that, there should be some general questions that, if you have a question on the presentation. But we're going to go through issues. There's nine issues that we're going to talk about. You'll have a time to talk on each one of those when they come up. So I'd ask that you keep your questions on any of the issues until that issue comes up. So the general presentation's going to be very general. If you have a question generally on anything, we'll have public input on that. But then we're going to, after that's done, we're going to start with issue number one right on through issue number nine. And each time, you'll have an opportunity to speak to each of those as we work our way through it. Okay? So I'll turn it over to our city manager.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. Just as you alluded to, Mayor, we're going to give -- staff's going to provide a presentation overview on the commercial cannabis ordinance. I just want to take a moment to recognize both Officer Kamara and Officer Venoni in the audience this evening. Thank you for attending. It's pretty appropriate that we bring this item back tonight for review and discussion for a couple of reasons. One, I want to note that it was almost exactly a year ago tonight, year and one day, that the ordinance was officially adopted by council. At the time when the agenda was adopt -- or, excuse me, when the ordinance was adopted, I think it was clear that there was going to be revisions that were going to be needed because, at the time that the ordinance was adopted, the state was still going through its process of adopting its final regulations. And even at this point in time, the state hasn't officially adopted the final cannabis regulations. And so I want to kind of caveat the discussion tonight that there may be future revisions, that this isn't the end-all, be-all for our ordinance. We recognize that the industry is still in flux, and we're still trying to work to bring into a model that will ensure that the cannabis industry is in compliance. But there's obviously lots of consideration that needs to be done, and I know the council wants to deliberate very carefully. What we're going to do tonight is give you a comprehensive overview of the ordinance and really cover a lot of background information in how we got here tonight. As you know, it was after the dispensary process that council provided direction to staff to bring back this review so you could provide your feedback on some of the key issues that were identified over the last year and during that RFP process. So with that said, I'm just going to go ahead and jump in. The presentation tonight, as Mayor, you indicated, we're going to go through it completely, and then we'll step back and we'll walk through the issues that have been identified. Obviously, there may be other issues that come up during the discussion tonight. I do, just as a matter of order, as identified on the agenda, we generally request that speakers limit their comments to three minutes or less. I will take note of the time when speakers speak on issues and provide you a reference to the number of minutes that are left so we can keep track. In all fairness, because I know there's a lot of folks that like to speak on this item tonight, and it'll keep it fair for everybody to be able to speak. So I'm going to dive right in. Again, just an overview, which just provided. Kate's going to provide a overview of California cannabis regulations, as well as a background and status on the ordinance. Then we're going to conduct the ordinance review, followed by a brief discussion on the cannabis dispensary proposal process, and then walk through nine issues that were identified as part of review of the cannabis ordinance. So Kate, I'll turn it over to you.
Sure. And bear with us as we do this review, there's a lot of folks that seem to be entering the conversation a little later, and so we're trying to make sure everyone has the same baseline. So we're doing a little over-explaining tonight with the hope that it'll educate everyone to where the city is and where the state is too in this process. But as most of you know, that, you know, cannabis in some form has been legal in California for over 20 years. We've been in this landscape since 1996, when voters passed the Capashionate Use Act for medicinal cannabis. The legislature then finally got involved in '03 and passed laws that allowed for dispensaries to come into play, which are cooperatives and collectives of patients getting together to access medicinal cannabis because there was access issues. And then, not until 2015, then the legislature speak again, and that was when they came up with regulations and licensing process for those medicinal businesses. But then, just a year later, the voters in the state passed Prop 64, as everyone knows, and that was on recreational cannabis. And so then we had two different systems kind of existing, the medicinal and the recreational. And so last year, the legislature caught up and passed something that combined both of those into one law, and we call it MAU-CURSA, and it regulates medicinal and adult-use cannabis. It's a comprehensive, you know, licensing, testing, and, you know, inspection. It's very comprehensive, and this is an extensively regulated industry. And that law gives cities and counties the ability to do what they want to do and regulate cannabis businesses how they choose in their own community, and the city has done that in Cloverdale. You could go ahead and go forward. And in Cloverdale, as folks probably also know, we adopted an ordinance. We started out just addressing medicinal stuff with personal grows, didn't address any commercial issues. Then, in late 2016, things picked up, and after Prop 64 had passed, the council decided, hey, let's do an ordinance here that addresses businesses. You know, clearly, the cultural shift is among us, and we need to address cannabis in our community. And so then, in 2017, like David said, a year later, the city held public hearings, lots of meetings, and we ended up passing an ordinance that's in our zoning code that spells out in great detail how commercial cannabis businesses are regulated in Cloverdale. And the next group of slides on this will cover what we have in the books now so that everybody has kind of that same baseline of knowledge, because all of that really informs what we're trying to get from the council tonight and the public on direction on any changes. But we have a pretty comprehensive structure already, so we're going to kind of go over that and what it is so we can remind everyone what we have on the books now, because it's a lot. And that ordinance is in effect currently. We are, there's five applications currently in process at various levels in the city. And we'll get more into that later, but sorry, go ahead.
Okay. Thank you for that overview, Kate. And at this point, we're going to kind of dive into the specific elements of your cannabis ordinance, and just want to note that the copy of the ordinance, the adopted in its final form, was included in the agenda packet. And we're also tonight going to reference quite a bit Table 1, which is an attachment to the ordinance, which identifies the summary of allowed commercial cannabis uses and permit requirements. The ordinance is very comprehensive in terms of identifying the state license types, most specifically includes standards for dispensaries. And again, the council had quite a deliberation discussion about the number of ordinances that would be -- or, excuse me, the number of dispensaries that should be allowed by ordinance in the city of Cloverdale. For some time, council discussed, you know, whether it should be one or two, and there was even thought and consideration about whether the council would consider additional dispensaries. But finally, you settled on two, and that's what's identified as a maximum within the ordinance. Other uses considered in the ordinance, again, following the state license types, include nurseries, which really cover, you know, no different than what you would consider a commercial nursery. It's, you know, clones and seeds that enable growing in larger cultivation operations. Following on that is small cultivation operations for indoor, mixed-light, and outdoor cultivation. I do want to note that the council kind of set a threshold in terms of the overall square foot, square footage that's allowed within the ordinance. So you'll see in your land use table that anything that exceeds 10,000 square feet is not permitted currently under your ordinance. And that was a specific direction that was provided by the council to kind of keep the cultivation component and license types, you know, not permitted because we felt that there might have some potentially significant environmental impacts with those larger cultivations. In addition, the cannabis ordinance addresses manufacturing, distribution, delivery, testing, and transportation, and there's a comprehensive set of standards that apply to those specific uses. And last but not least, our microbusinesses. To touch a little bit on microbusinesses, that particular license type was added by the state to enable cannabis permit businesses that have three of four required uses, such as including retail, nursery, cultivation, manufacturing, and distribution. So to be able to apply for a microbusiness license through the state, you have to have three of the four uses. And just for clarification, it's important to note, and I think we'll probably have further discussion about it tonight, that particularly as it relates to microbusinesses, you can have a retail component that's a -- that has a storefront, and you can also have a retail component that's a non-storefront. Non-storefront retail is not considered a dispensary under the cannabis ordinance and therefore can be allowed within the microbusiness and therefore is not subject to the RFP process. But we'll go a little bit more into that. One thing to note is, under the ordinance, it grants the authority to the city manager to issue commercial cannabis permits, with the exception of dispensary permits. And as you know, the ordinance provides a pretty extensive request process, and ultimately, dispensary permits are issued by the city council. To date, council has provided direction to staff to issue a permit for one dispensary permit to dispensary cannabis business known as Red Door Remedies. So what I'd like to take a moment to point out is the Table 1, as I referenced in earlier, that is attached to the ordinance. This table is very important because it sets forth the zoning type by license type. So there's a cross-reference in terms of where cannabis permits are allowed by zoning, and this is something that was identified as one of the issues, is to look specifically at zoning and which cannabis permits are allowed within which zoning district. And so staff will take time to reference this table from time to time throughout the presentation tonight. There are extra copies for the folks here tonight. If you need a copy of the table, there is a copy available up front here next to the measure. Yes, yes on the signs. The table refers to those uses that we discussed earlier, including cultivation, manufacturing, testing, dispensaries, et cetera. And it identifies which zoning districts each one of those license types are allowed within, subject to a cannabis permit. So this is a very useful table to reference as you review the ordinance this evening. So moving on, we're going to jump right in on the cannabis ordinance standards. As this council is fully aware, the ordinance was developed to address the significant environmental issues that may result, so, from cannabis uses. And as such, staff, with your input and the community's input, developed a very significant set of application requirements and standards that apply to cannabis permits. And what I'm really just trying to outline for the council, what all those standards are, these standards apply to all cannabis permit types. So not one of them is exempt from it. These are the standards that apply to all cannabis permits within the city of Cloverdale, including those that are subject to cannabis permits in Table 1. So just want to touch on the various commercial cannabis standards. Those include addressing issues of the health and safety, payment of taxes, employees, weights and measures, police notification, monitoring, you know, restriction on alcohol sales, liability and indemnification. The reason I want to point those out is because each one of those issues, the council had considerable discussion and input from the community as you developed those standards. And we're not going to cover each one of them specifically tonight, but it is, again, if we need to, we can reference those in the cannabis ordinance. So moving on, the ordinance contains not only those specific, or those general development standards, it contains specific development standards for each of the license types. So as you move through the ordinance, you'll find that there are specific standards for cultivation, for example. And again, the council gave -- did a lot of work to really consider what were those specific standards that pertain to each of those license types. And what I'm just pointing out here is that you addressed specific zoning requirements for cannabis cultivation. You identified, you know, what's the maximum square footage, what are the appropriate zoning districts, and what are some of the specific standards that apply to cannabis cultivation. Last but not least, there are also specific setback standards for each of the license types. And I point that out because the ordinance, in the general development standards section, references that setback standards are set forth within each section of the ordinance as it pertains to that particular license type. And that's something that I know there's been a lot of confusion around, and so we do want to note that, as we review the ordinance tonight, that there are specific setback requirements for each of the license types. Kate, I'll turn over to you.
Sure. And as we're talking about-- And as we're talking about setbacks and distance requirements that the cannabis businesses need to comply with, I just wanted to put this up here, because this state law gets referenced a lot, and so I wanted to actually give everybody the language, because I'm a lawyer, and that's what I like to do, but it's, 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 I think it's informative. And basically, the state law on this says that, you know, a cannabis business that the state licenses shall not be located within 600 feet of a school, that's any K-12 school, public or private, a daycare center, or a youth center that's in existence when the license is issued, unless a licensing authority, meaning the city or the county, you know, unless a local authority specifies a different radius. So the state left it to the local entities to come up with different distance, you know, higher or lower, if they want to. So I just wanted to put that out there, so everyone knows that the state does say certain things, but they also gave a lot of freedom to the local agencies to, to change that if they want to. And that's only, I'm sorry. Airman, go ahead, sir.
I was going to note that since, since the adoption of the cannabis ordinance by the council, the, the school board has adopted a resolution recommending specific setback requirements that pertain to two license types, most specifically cultivation, and secondarily dispensaries. Again, there's those other, there are other license types that we, as we've discussed, including, you know, the manufacturing, distribution, and micro businesses. The, the resolution that the school board adopted did not address setback requirements for those other uses. So it's very specific to both cultivation and dispensaries.
Mr. Mayor?
We just got to that more later.
Can he, can he just name the, the exact footage?
Excuse me, one second.
I was wondering if he could just name the exact footage, so we're going with that moving forward.
Well, we're going to get more into detail on that. It's going to be discussed, so just hold your questions until the end. Okay.
Okay, moving on. What I, what I'm referencing here in, in this slide is the zoning for cannabis cultivation. Really want to note that, in so much as outdoor cultivation, based on the outdoor standards that, or the, the setback standards that the council developed for outdoor cultivation, we determined that they really only could be permitted within the rural residential zoning district, and that's what's identified on your zoning table. Otherwise, cultivation is only permitted within the industrial and manufacturing, general industrial, or industrial park zoning designation. So cultivation is generally limited, you know, within the city to those two specific zoning, commercial cultivation. As you know, personal cultivation is provided for, for medical purposes, and that's set forth in the table, which allows up to three plants outdoors, and within 100 square feet of a detached structure. And additionally, the Adult Use Act did provide for indoor cultivation of six plants for, for personal use, and that, and that's set forth in state law, and this table, this table just references basically that provision. So moving on, the ordinance also includes standards for manufacturing, testing, stores, distribution, delivery, and micro businesses. And for the most part, those, those uses are limited to your commercial zoning districts and your industrial zoning districts. And one of the considerations for the micro business was that the council allowed it within the service commercial zoning designation, so long as there was no cultivation, again, because council was concerned about cultivation within the, within the commercial zoning district. So there, there's a specific call-out for cultivation within the service commercial zoning district. Again, the, the zoning table does provide and list those specific zoning districts for which those permit types are allowed within, the focus being, again, your, your commercial and industrial zoning districts. And that's something that you may want to review and consider tonight when we bring up the issue of, of zoning. For example, one of the issues that was discussed quite a bit by council was whether dispensaries are allowed in the downtown commercial zoning district. I'm not saying that that's a specific issue you want to discuss tonight, but that was something that the council discussed quite a bit. Likewise, council also discussed whether dispensaries should be permitted within the TOD zoning district, and that's something, again, we'll, we'll touch on, we'll touch on later.
So with dispensaries, there's a maximum of two permitted, and this relates to retail storefront dispensaries that the public can go into to purchase medical or recreational cannabis. And they're allowed in commercial and industrial, as well as the transit, TOD, the transit-oriented development area currently. We do limit the maximum size of the dispensary, as you see, and then there's setbacks currently that, for dispensaries requires that they be at least 600 feet from schools or childcare facilities, and also not appear as a requirement that they be 600 feet from other dispensaries. And they cannot be within 100 feet of a residential zone, or on any parcel with a residential dwelling, which is one reason why one of the issues on the agenda tonight involves, you know, the TOD, because there's a little bit of an implied conflict there with that residential use, and it comes in with that one. And also not within 200 feet of parks, libraries, or youth facilities. Now, with the dispensaries, it's the only place in the ordinance where we have this kind of language. There is an option that the council can waive the 100-foot residential zoning requirement, or waive that requirement that they be 600 feet from another dispensary, if there are impassable, you know, not, an actual physical separation between those uses. So there's the ability to waive those two setback requirements. And later, on one of the issues, Issue 7, we'll be talking more about that waiver language, and whether you want to expand that to other uses, or just keep it with dispensaries, or expand it with dispensaries. But right now, it's only for dispensaries. There's also, you know, the detailed application process that we have in the ordinance that everyone went through, where there's sort of an open period, the staff does the review, there's a recommendation to council, there was a, there's a public hearing where you consider everything. So this council had that process, and there was an RFP issued, you can jump it aside. Three proposer teams were invited, and they made a public presentation at a public hearing in March. In the second meeting in March, the council considered a resolution, various resolutions, giving out those permits, or approving the, allowing the city manager to issue those permits, and one was approved for Red Door Remedies, and that is currently in process. And there's, one thing that, to note on that RFP process for dispensaries, is that the, the ordinance also says that the applicant pool, you know, after you close the process, which you did in April, you closed that process for the dispensary licenses, if the council opens up that process again within one year, staff is free to sort of go back to that qualified applicant pool, and look at those, consider those remaining applicants again, instead of starting all over from scratch, and inviting those folks to just submit the same application, and, you know, not having to pay that fee again, and do all that. So the two proposers that did not receive a license are technically sort of still in that pool, that could be invited to apply again later.
Okay, at this point, we'd like to give the council an overview of the, the nine issues that staff, with council feedback, provided us. One of the topics that came up since the original adoption of the ordinance was events and festivals. And the Bureau of Cannabis Control has adopted requirements for events and festivals. As you know, we received a proposal to hold an event locally. They're, they're required by the regulations to be held at, at a fairground or fair, and when we presented it to council, we clearly identified that the ordinance didn't address or provide specific standards relative to events or festivals related to cannabis. And so, we, we identified that as one of the issues that we, we, we thought was appropriate for the council to review tonight, and determine whether an amendment should add a section providing specific guidelines for permitting process, you know, related to special events, in line with state law, as well as regulations. And what we've identified is that the MACURSA does, does provide specific regulations, and it's up to council whether you want to amend your ordinance, or revise the ordinance to, to provide standards for events and festivals. Issue number two, and this kind of gets at the issue that was presented by the school district about setbacks, is whether you want to consider the method of measuring setbacks and determine if they should be modified or updated. The amendment could clarify the method for requirement for each cannabis use. As I mentioned earlier, each section, license type, has its own specific setback standard, so you can look at that by license type, if the council so desires. And as, as I noted earlier, the Cloverdale Unified School District trustees has adopted a resolution, which they did in June, that recommended a larger setback from schools for both cultivation and dispensaries, and the, the school district did provide a copy of that, that resolution to the city. Kate, I don't know if you want to talk a little bit about this?
Sure, we're, we're, so, issue two, this is sort of a, this slide has the cannabis uses, they're on the left side, and then the sensitive uses is what we call them on the top, and the various setback requirements. People, you know, process information differently, things like this help me process information to separate every use and every setback. And so, when we talk about that in more detail, this might be something that helps you go through each, you know, use by use, and whether you want to address the recommendation to increase the setback from schools from 600 feet to 1,000 feet, or whether you want, you know, to change any of the others, including the measuring, you know, how the distances are measured. We can provide more detail on that when we get there.
And what staff has done is, is developed some illustrative maps to identify what a 600-foot setback looks like from sensitive uses, including schools, childcare, and parks.
Take care centers, not parks.
Or, excuse me, libraries and youth centers. And what, what staff is really, again, just trying to present is, is an illustrative picture of, of what those setbacks look like when applied on a citywide basis over your zoning map. Kind of a takeaway, when you look at this, is that a number of, you know, fairly significant land area is, is taken up by the, or within those, those setbacks. And likewise, when we look at what 1,000 feet looks like, it, 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 it has a more significant impact in terms of the amount of zoned area that's available for a cannabis business. We don't have a position on that, we just want to show the council, illustrate what that, what that appears, what that looks like. And then generally, if you move from 600 to 1,000 feet, it's going to, it's going to reduce the availability of, of properties available for cannabis permit applicants.
And those maps are approximate, I would like to add, not exact, because sometimes the mapping software just pulls in a whole parcel, so, it's not exact.
Okay, Kate.
We're also, issue three will be just kind of cleanup and addressing new regs that are coming out from the state that are done, the state issued new regulations, they've been operating under emergency regulations, and they just ended their comment period on the changes to those. And so, I think what they're doing right now is reviewing all the comments they received, and we're anticipating that soon they'll come out with their final statement on all those comments, and by December, they should be adopting those regulations in final form from the current ones. But the Prop 64 and the other laws that were passed by the legislature basically give the state's Bureau of Cannabis Control and the, the other departments that oversee cannabis licensing, you know, free game over the regs they develop, and they have a lot. So it complicates our job, because they're still in flux, but we're pretty confident of where they are landing now. So we'll be doing some cleanup. And then, issue four will also be, part of that cleanup is addressing license types. I think we got a little too detailed in our ordinance, and we want to keep it more broad, because the state keeps changing everything, and we also want to address all these sublicense types that are coming out by the state, the shared use license, the processor license, the transport-only license, that technically fit under the broad license categories, but we want to make sure people aren't confused and know that, you know, the city, if you want them, is welcoming those businesses too. Because the industry is rapidly changing, and I think those sublicenses will come out, will continue to come out as they progress. And on number five, we just, you know, as a check-in with council, we wanted to get any feedback from council and the public, and get direction from the council on whether you want to change the ordinance, on how many dispensaries you allow in the city. Do you want to reduce it, increase it, or keep it the same? Keeping in mind that any changes you do direct us to come back, to do, would, would come back to you eventually for public hearings, and also likely go to the planning commission first. So this is just sort of step one.
On issue number six, this, this gets back to your land use table that we've talked about earlier. Really, this is an opportunity to review the zoning for each of the license types, and whether the cannabis permits that are identified within those, the specific zonings should remain as they currently are, or if amendments are recommended by council. So what we're asking council to do in this particular issue is to really review your land use table and determine if the matrix should be amended to modify any of the cannabis permits types. So as I mentioned earlier, you could decide that dispensaries may no longer be allowed in the downtown commercial zoning districts, for instance, and we would then update and amend this table accordingly.
And then, the issue number seven, that we're going to be seeking direction on, and like I referenced before, related to the setback requirements for each business, is the potential for an exception or waiver to those distance requirements. And so, you know, as you start the process of taking in applications, and with all those setback requirements, as you could see on the first map, it's, you know, there is still limited properties available where these businesses can go, and so, some cities and counties have been using this tool to kind of, on a case-by-case basis, analyze an application and say, okay, if there's a, you know, a major barrier between the use and the sensitive use, you know, between the cannabis business and, say, the school, it's, you know, 590 feet, but there's a sound wall, or a busy road, and the way you would walk there is actually 1,000 feet, they, you know, they'll grant an exception to the distance requirement. So it's just a, putting it out there is if you, if the council wants to expand the current waiver language we have for dispensaries to other uses, and even, or beef it up a little bit, I would recommend if you do want to expand it, we beef it up. So that's issue seven.
Issue number eight is, is something that has been raised regarding the state regulations, which identifies specific personnel that are prohibited from holding licenses. Under the state regs, no elected or appointed official from a state or a political subdivision can hold a, a permit. As currently identified, this provision in the state regulations does not apply to city officials, or city-appointed officials. But this is a, a recommendation to consider whether it would be appropriate to include a provision in the cannabis ordinance that specifically prohibits, or basically extends this particular guideline that's in the state regs to local officials. And last but not least, is we've identified that there are some, some minor cleanup amendments that are required in, in the ordinance. There were a few notations when council was originally considering the cannabis ordinance to a use permit. We now know that we, we call them cannabis permits, and there, there's just some other small, really minor, kind of cleanup changes that we, we've identified, and you, we recommend that you authorize staff to undertake some minor administrative revisions to the ordinance as part of your ordinance review, and we'd ultimately bring that back, and we can bring it back if, if you agree with that as a red line, so you could see obviously all, all any changes that staff makes that are, that are kind of just cleanup measures. But we just wanted to- But we just wanted to point that out, that that is something that staff is recommending that you enable us, the authority, to do. With the, this last slide, Mayor, council members, that really concludes staff's presentation. I think at this point, what we're going to do is back it up to issue number one. First, we'd like to have the council have, address any questions you may have of the issues that we've identified, and then otherwise, open it up for public comment.
Well, thank you for that. Very detailed, very good update and presentation. Any general questions from the council, other than on the specific issues, which we'll spend considerable time? Okay.
I do.
You do have a question. Okay, Councilmember Walter.
I was at a meeting last evening, and the meeting I was at had, the housing area has CCNRs, and I can't remember. I know we discussed previously, they wanted to know, are they, do their CCNRs supersede the city's? For example, where I'm running with that is if they said in their CCNRs, no indoor grow, or they said you can't smoke it on your property, does the state over, and the city override their CCNRs?
I don't think the state would appreciate some of that, because the state law is very clear that anyone over 21 has the right to grow up to six plants in their home and to consume cannabis on their property. There's certain regulations if you're near a school, this or that, but no, the state law is going to trump a CCNR, so.
Okay. Thank you.
As well as the city ordinance.
Yeah, and the city ordinance, I mean, in terms of, not in terms of those things, but if, you know, the city ordinance also would, you know, likely trump when it comes to allowing a medical patient to grow outdoors. That's, but we don't enforce CCNRs, that would be a civil issue for them to figure out.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions from council? Okay. I'm going to open it up for any general questions on background or some of the things. We'll stay away from the specific issues until that item comes up. Would anybody like to address the city council on a general question? Yes.
My name is Terry Conway, resident of Cloverdale. Specifically, in fact, the issue that Gus Walter brought up just now, my concern is, as a property owner, can I prohibit a tenant from using or growing cannabis?
Yes, you may. Property owners are free to control their own property with tenants, including commercial property owners.
Thank you, a good question, thank you. Would anybody else like to address the city council on any general item that was covered? Okay, seeing none, we'll close that, and we'll go to issue number one.
Okay, council. One note I just wanted to make is, staff did receive a number of letters in support of a particular cannabis permit business, and, you know, would you want to recognize that the letters were entered into the public record, they're provided to the council under date as for your review. However, tonight, the, what staff is seeking is really your feedback on the ordinance, not a decision on a particular business, so just wanted to point that out. These letters will be entered into the record and will be included with your minutes, otherwise, but just wanted to make that note.
Thank you.
So, the first issue that has been identified for discussion by the council is whether to amend the ordinance to provide guidelines for permitting cannabis-related special events in line with the state regulations and state law. Again, for MACURSA, there are some specific guidelines. Obviously, anybody who wants to hold or have a local event must be a cannabis permit holder. They must apply to both the state and the locality for permission to hold the event, or we must provide some standards pertaining our ordinance. The event may not last more than four consecutive days, and must be, and this is key, at a county fair or district agricultural event. You know, obviously, we have the citrus fairgrounds within, in the city of Cloverdale, and that would provide an authorized location. Finally, consumption area must be limited to those folks that are 21 years and older, and it, you know, must not be visible from public space, and consumption is permitted. I mean, no tobacco, alcohol, or consumption is permitted on the event premise.
And also, one more thing, I think the regs also say that there's no smoking allowed if there's no smoking allowed anyway on that property. And some cities and counties have addressed this with just requiring the events to come and get like a temporary use permit, and have some basic, you know, pretty, you know, staff review or something. Others require it to come before the legislative body for approval, but we're just seeking some input because our ordinance is currently silent on the events.
Thank you. Okay, I guess some members of the public are having a hard time hearing, so if we could get the mics closer, and maybe we could turn the volume up a little bit on those. Thank you. Okay, any questions from city council?
You know, I'd also like to recommend, Michelle, come on down, sit up front if you'd like, maybe you could hear better, I don't know.
She's not alone, I can't hear either.
All right. Thanks, Frank. Thank you. So, I'm going to open this up for public comment. Would anybody like to address the city council on this item? Okay, seeing none, we'll close the public comment, bring it back to the city council. Just, I'll start off, I have a couple of comments and questions. I think, if I understand it, the city has control when these applications come in to require various security, various hours, when they can and can't. As an example, if school was in session, we can restrict the hours of operation for that in our approval letter, is that correct?
Likely, yeah.
Well, I want to make sure.
I'm pretty sure, yeah, we can, because if we could also say no.
So, I would like that as we move forward, to at least be explored, to make sure that's an important item.
Yeah, the state has pretty lengthy regs on these events as well.
Well, the state won't issue, my understanding is for the special, and I could be wrong, so I'm just throwing out my understanding of it, the state won't issue unless the city approves it. The city's going to approve it only if we have, the things are in place that we're accepting.
Yes.
Okay, so that's an important thing for us to understand, so, okay. Yes, Councilmember Walter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, I would be very supportive of having events, not to be redundant, but as long as we had final control over the operation of the event, you know, everything had to be blessed off by the city, and especially our police department or the county sheriff, however, we're going to do that. So, I would support events being in the ordinance somewhere.
Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I too support the events, recognizing, as Councilmember Walter pointed out, and as you pointed out, that we have control. It's very important, particularly in the beginning, that we pay a lot of attention to something like events in, dealing with cannabis, only because it's new and because there are all kinds of feelings and thoughts, which may or may not be accurate. I am, for example, very interested in the event that we've approved, because we know the people involved, they've been very direct in explaining what that event is like, what's going to happen, and I think what I'd like to make sure we do is go a little bit further in the beginning, and get to know the people, get to know their background a bit, more than we sometimes do. Sometimes, we have a name that we recognize or something that looks good, and we always want to have events that will help the city. But I think we need to be sure that we have a series of questions that are relative to this particular industry, which we don't. We tend not to ask people about their specific industry and their specific background. And just in the beginning, I think it might be good if we had assigned it to a subcommittee or an ad hoc committee, whose special job it is to take a look at the event in totality. And we can give that, you know, a year or whatever. I don't know, maybe people will be beating our doors down. I think they may, particularly if the event coming up is a success, I'd say I think it may be, and the fact that we have a very nice county fair area, and a very well-known one. So, I think this could turn out to be something really good, but I'd like to handle it very specially. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Bagby.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I'd like to see this codified, especially, and I completely concur with Vice Mayor Russell's assessment, it's very important to communicate what our expectations are, so that also, when people are coming to us with some interest, that there aren't any gotchas, that we're have a very clear application form, very clearly communicating what our values are and what our expectations are, and come up with a very clearly communicated process so that the industry knows what to expect. And I fully support having events like this, because, I mean, I think that when, before I was on the council, when all of you started this process, it was very important to everyone to normalize this industry, because these are our, these are our citizens here, these are our folks who are trying to do business with us. So, I am very interested in treating them, how I would want to be treated, which is transparent process, clear list of expectations, and having it all codified so that we're all on the same page, so.
Good, thank you. So, you have your direction?
Mayor, council.
I think it's clear that we would like it to be brought back, yeah.
Right, and it sounds like, one, there's a consensus that we include provisions in the ordinance that provide or allow cannabis special events. One thing I wanted to check in with council on that is whether council wants to retain the authority to actually, you know, review and approve those permits, or if you'd like that to be at staff level. Obviously, we can.
I think initially.
Provide a specific, develop a specific application that calls for the requirements that the council wants to see in the development standards that need to be met to hold those events. And so, one option would be to have those come before you as the body to approve, or to have that be, again, similar to the other cannabis permits, approved by city manager, subject to meeting those development standards.
If I might, my thought was to give us a review of the first two or three events, so we begin to understand what we know and what we don't know, and what the public knows and doesn't know, and so that we try to anticipate, particularly if there are events like this, which there will be and are, happening in other places. I want us to learn so we really understand what we're doing, and so that we don't set ourselves up inadvertently to blow what could be a very good, very good, new way of dealing with the realities of the cannabis industry. Because there's a lot that's very exciting about it, there's a lot that I think will benefit our economy, and will, also, I am hoping, which is what I've been hoping for many years, that will eventually, if we can control, everybody can control our desire for more tax dollars, that will reduce the black market and events and things that legitimize this and make it what it is, which is something that can be of great benefit medically and otherwise. But I just want to make sure we do it right in the beginning, and we've never really looked at events that way, because we don't get a whole lot of events coming in. Nobody comes in and says, hi, I've got, you know, a particular show doing whatever, that we don't really understand. And so, I think the first two or three or whatever staff decides, or the council decides, and our attorney decides, might be a good thing. And the public can help us in this way, particularly those folks in Cloverdale who know the business and are part of the cannabis business. I'd like them to give us the advice, particularly someone I'm looking at, Patrick King and his family, who are putting on an event. I'd like, I want their help, and that's why I suggested an ad hoc for the first two or three.
Very good.
So, we have some understanding of it.
Thank you. Did you have a comment?
No, go ahead.
Okay. I don't think it should come back to the city council. I think the provisions should be clear enough, the only way it should come back is if it's up for appeal, based on a denial or something. That's the only way it should come back, and you'll have grounds why you did not approve it. I don't want this to become a political football, where we have 25 or 50 people in here, and council trying to make decisions. I want it to be done based on the facts, and I think staff should be entrusted to do that, based on the guidelines we put into the ordinance. And if you follow the ordinance, and you reject it for cause, and they want to appeal that, then I think it could come back to council for at least consideration, but to, that's my feeling on it.
Well, that's consistent with the design review process as well, so.
It is, it is.
And other, and so, actually, I think it's wise to have consistent and reasonable expectations, and I think that would be consistent with our other, with our other operations. But I am very interested in making sure that when that application does come back, that that is reviewed thoroughly by the council, and make sure that we're answering all those questions, and then hopefully, work with some local industry folks to get their input, make sure that we're asking all the right questions. But I think that the appeals process is the appropriate way to handle that.
And if I might to just add, and that the public.
Well, I'm going to talk out of both sides of my mouth. But basically, you know, I agree with you, I think staff should have the flexibility to approve them. However, for the first couple, I kind of like to take a peek at, whether it be with the subcommittee method or not, just so that, I mean, there's some things that I want to make sure that are in place. And I don't know all of them, but I'll know it when I don't see it, you know, so, yeah, I could buy that going to a subcommittee. I also, not to go off on a side note, I view this ordinance to be reviewed in the beginning every couple months, every couple years, I should say, and we could always tweak it and make changes to it. So, in the beginning, I like a subcommittee to look at it. Thank you.
Just one recommendation, one option too is to do, you know, as each, because there's not likely going to be a whole lot of them, as each comes, each application is submitted, you could just assign a temporary ad hoc, that way you avoid some of the circus you were talking about, versus a subcommittee which might hold up the process, because you have to go with that schedule and all of that.
Exactly.
Okay.
That's great.
Thank you, that's why I suggested ad hoc, because it's more flexible, and you can drop it after a couple of things. And it's not that the council needs to make the final decision all the time, it's just that we need, as you were saying, Councilmember, to be educated, and I think we understand that, so that the public too is educated, because we can get a surprise, and I don't want to ruin a whole thing just because we, you know, we forgot item number 212, which is, you know, can happen in this situation.
Okay, well, thank you. Staff, do you have any other questions, or from council? You got your direction?
Staff's clear on your direction, thank you for the input.
Okay, all right, thank you. So, we'll move on to issue number two.
Okay, so, issue number two is the setbacks from schools, parks, use centers, libraries, and residential uses for cannabis businesses, as we talked about. Perhaps we should go to the grid, the next slide.
Could you talk in your mic?
Sure.
I'm sorry.
Each use has a different set of setbacks, they're similar but slightly different, and each use also specifies, or doesn't specify, the method by which the setback is measured. Sometimes in planning, there's a default measurement method where you go property line to property line in a straight line. That's not the approach with every use in our ordinance. That is the approach for dispensaries, and it's called out that way. However, for manufacturers, distributors, microbusinesses, and testing labs, those distance requirements from the sensitive uses are actually measured from the property line of the sensitive use to the facility where the cannabis use is occurring, not the property line of the use. Mixed light cultivation is, I believe, that is property line to property line, and outdoor cultivation, I believe, is also property line to property line, but it might be to the cultivation site, I have to double-check that. But that hasn't come up as an issue, we haven't gotten any applications for outdoor. And the school district, as the city manager mentioned, has requested, through their recommendation on their resolution, that the 600-foot setback we currently have from schools, childcare, and childcare centers be increased to 1,000 feet for cultivation and dispensaries, is what it said. So, I'm assuming that would also include a microbusiness with cultivation, because that would be a cultivation use. And issue seven on the waiver would also tie into this, but we can hold off and I think have that discussion separately.
Okay.
So, staff's curious if there's any desire by council to change these setbacks or get more detailed on the measurements. We are going to, on the indoor cultivation, clean up that section a little bit, it's a little too quiet on some of the setbacks and measurements, it kind of defaults to the state.
Thank you. Just for clarification on the microbusiness, did, you mentioned cultivation, my understanding is if they don't have cultivation, and if they don't have a dispensary, that would, they don't necessarily have, they could have several other things, right?
Yeah.
Maybe you could walk me through that one more time.
Sure, a microbusiness. A microbusiness, under the regs, currently needs three out of four different uses, but there's variations on how that can play out. It can be, one component is cultivation, less than 10,000 square feet as an option, but you don't have to cultivate, per the regs that the state came out, because they clarified a confusing section in Prop 64. Distribution, you can be a distributor, which is someone who moves products between licensees. You can also do retail, either storefront retail or non-storefront retail, which is delivery only, so the public doesn't enter the business, you're delivering to folks. And for manufacturing, it can only be non-volatile manufacturing. And I may have missed one. Testing cannot be part of a microbusiness, because testing is a license that someone can only hold that one license, they can't be involved in any other part of the business. They can test their own products within a microbusiness, but they can't operate as a testing licensee.
Got you. Okay. Thank you. Questions from council?
You know, Mr. Mayor, I'm okay with the way it's laid out here, but I really want to see how it interacts with number seven, exceptions and waivers. I'm, you know, I could live with these, I don't know if I can live with how we decide exceptions and waivers.
I'm not clear, you can live with the current ordinance with the 600 feet, is what you're saying?
Yes.
Okay.
But when you come for a waiver, I understand.
Okay. Do you have comments?
Not yet. No, I mean, I have, I have questions, only in terms of becoming educated. I need to know, before I'm comfortable saying, well, this is okay or that's not, what it is we're achieving, or hope to achieve. If we had 600 feet, that was what the state required, and it seemed to be applicable to most things, what, what do we get with 1,000? Should we think of something, I mean, I see that 1,000 eliminates a core, and that's, that may be the goal, I don't know. But is there a goal, for example, do we think that this will protect youngsters from being attracted to cannabis? Because if so, then I think we have to look at a lot of things very seriously that our young people are subject to. It always upsets me a little bit when I walk in and see that we have liquor available, and cigarettes, and vaping, and gambling, and all kinds of things. And I remember when I was a kid, going into, you know, I saw a kid do that not very long ago, went into, you know, hot day to get an ice cream cone, and I can remember going in, and in the city, I got a nickel or a dime, or whatever they were back in the day, and sure enough, there was everybody drinking and having a wonderful time, and buying liquor and whatever. And so I'm not quite sure
Well, let's see if we can get some
No, I want to know from the public more about what it is we're achieving by doing 1,000. Will 800 do, is 1,200 too much? I mean, do we have any other, and I couldn't find any expertise, any experts in my own research, who could tell me what the direct result of a particular number of feet was as opposed to another number of feet. Do you know what I mean? They couldn't, they couldn't give me any information about how that affected young people, for example, or how it affected addicts.
Let's let the public have some
Well, that's why I'm asking.
Well, let me open it up first, okay? That's the next step.
That's why I'm bringing up the subject.
That's the next step.
Before we make a decision.
Well, we're not making a decision, we're gonna open it up. Would anybody in the audience like to address the city council on this item? Please come forward, remember you have three minutes, and each person will be able to speak one time under this item.
Just one small point on this, the
Please sign the book there, and
For all of the uses that we
Hold that one second. Whoever wants to, come on down, sign the book, and the next one come down, sign the book, take a seat, and then we'll just keep it going, if you could. Okay?
For all the uses that are listed here, I would just note that the only one that will likely have any visibility to the public, or that you'll know is there to say, would likely just be the dispensary use, the storefront. All the others in other cities and jurisdictions are quite anonymous, because they want to be, it's a security thing for most of them.
Sure. Makes sense. Thank you.
That's the point.
Okay. Please state your name for the record.
Jeremy Decker, superintendent at Cloverdale Schools. And I just wanted to clarify some of the language in the resolution, as the board passed. And I'm gonna read it so I don't mess it up, if that's okay with you guys. So the resolution of the governing board of the Cloverdale Unified School District, opposition to location of commercial cannabis cultivation dispensary within 1,000 feet of a school, if said cultivation dispensary site property line is within direct view from any of the Cloverdale Unified School District's school property lines. And 800 feet, if said cultivation dispensary site property line, is not visible from any of the Cloverdale Unified School District property lines. We also define property line, so I'm just gonna share that with you. The Board of Education of the Cloverdale Unified School District hereby, based on this record, defines property line as the distance measured in a straight line from the property line of the protected site to the closest property line of the parcel with the cannabis cultivation slash dispensary use, as established in Cloverdale City Council Ordinance Number, blah, blah, blah. So, I just wanted to clarify, because I didn't see that or hear that in any of the discussion, and hopefully that makes sense. If you have questions, I'll be
Thank, thank you. Any questions from council on that?
Just go back to what are we achieving?
Okay.
What do we get?
Can I state your name for the record, please?
Hi, good evening.
Speak into the mic.
Yeah. My name is Julie Mercer Ingram. I'm an attorney in Santa Rosa. I only practice cannabis law, so I do know a little bit about this, hopefully. I also serve as the co-chair for the Sonoma County Cannabis Advisory Group, which helps advise the county board of supervisors on their development of cannabis policy. I've also worked throughout the county in various municipalities, as well as in Mendocino and other nearby jurisdictions, to help advise them on their development of their cannabis policy. I'm here tonight to speak on item number two, as well as in support of the Garden Society. I've worked with that organization for a couple of years now, and I can vouch for the fact that they have an excellent compliance team, but also, more so, they really are trying to be a very positive force in an emerging industry, with a lot of economic and community focus. So, I'll just say that. Regarding item two, the setbacks, you know, it's important to consider the available property inventory in regard to what kind of businesses can start up here. When you're thinking about setbacks, you have immediately drawn lines in the sand that are hard to get past when it comes to land use and permitting. So, in your evaluation of the presented options here, I would strongly urge you to consider allowing staff to make discretionary decisions based on circumstances, like there's a block, there's a highway, there's a major road, there's intermediate uses, something that gives them some tools to use to allow the property inventory to be capitalized in a meaningful way, to help establish this new industry in your community. How you measure the setbacks, and how that applies to various license types, is something that often gets overlooked, so I appreciate that you're taking careful consideration on this. And I would just encourage you to develop a balanced policy between the available inventory and your community's needs. Finally, I just want to let you know that it's not just the community that permits, the state has a lot of requirements for cannabis operators when they're looking at their state licenses. Most businesses have to be close to the public unless you're a storefront retail, they have a lot of security requirements, bonds, insurance, background checks for owners, there's a lot you have to get to get the license. So please keep that in mind when it comes to what kind of setbacks you're gonna require, because it's much more of a process than just getting a local permit. So, thank you very much for your time, and I appreciate your consideration.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to address? Yes.
Hi, council, my name is Erin Gore. I am the founder and CEO of Garden Society. I just wanted to speak to your question around children, and what this is doing for children as it relates to setbacks. For non-open-to-the-public businesses, there's a very rigorous security standard that we need to meet, that's both in your local ordinance, as well in the state-defined ordinance. This involves 24/7 security cameras, stored for three months. This involves burglar alarms, this involves motion sensors. So access to licensed locations is extremely limited. There is no way children can inappropriately access licensed cannabis businesses. I think it's really important to understand the security measures as it relates to setbacks, because we don't want to draw artificial boundaries based on fear of not understanding all the regulations and what they mean for access, and who can enter that building legally. We're happy to talk about it, if you have further questions around that, as I'm sure your police department's well informed, and your staff, but just to help you, educate you as you determine setbacks, specifically for children, they cannot access licensed, licensed facilities. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Paula, council members. My name is Nick Caston, with Golden State Government Relations. We provide land use planning services, as well as advocacy services, to many industries, including the cannabis industry. I specifically want to talk about setbacks and their use as a policy tool. They are not an effective tool for handling impacts from any use. If we're talking about odor control, dealing with odor control mechanisms for a greenhouse or for a building, is a substantially more effective way to reduce that impact. If we're talking about security concerns, the actual operational plans, is a substantially more effective way to address that impact. Arbitrary setbacks from any use or sensitive use won't address anything, especially when you're utilizing property lines. A property can be any size, you could have the use up to an acre away from the actual edge of the property line. Using parcel-to-parcel property lines won't achieve the policy goals. I'd encourage you to look at actually outlining what it is you want, no odor off-site, security that, you know, is able to interact with the police department for urgent, you know, responses, or those types of things, and put in operational plans and operational requirements that address them, and utilize setbacks as a safe harbor. So, if you're outside of the 600 feet or the 200 feet, then we're gonna say that that impact's not gonna occur. If you're inside it, then you need to show an operational concern to, to address it, but not to prevent the use from coming in. And lastly, speaking to the state regs, I had the honor of being an advocate through Mercer, McCursa, and now Mawurso, up in Sacramento, as a state lobbyist. And, you know, we're going through lots and lots of revisions of these state regs, there'll be another round next year, when the state advisory board comes out with their recommendations. And I have to say that this industry has so many regulations, they can't advertise outside of their dispensaries, other than really the name of the company. There isn't an impact, the same as you see with alcohol and single-serve alcohol, used as like gas stations and such, where you can actually enter it and steal. That's just not an impact. So thank you for your consideration.
Thank you.
Terry Conway, resident of Cloverdale. I'd like to speak tonight in support of increasing those setbacks, to whatever extent the council decides. I think that it is important to try to keep this menace, I would say, this dangerous and addictive substance, out of the view, with a plain view of the children in town. I would be in favor of increasing that setback, to whatever extent, 1,000 feet or more, if the council so decides. I would also be in favor of using the most restrictive measurement method there, property line to property line, if that's, if that's what it is, in the final form of the ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, council, Dorian Cloverdale. I'd just like to say that a lot of these setbacks that come from the state, didn't come just from word of mouth or anything like that. A lot of this was researched and looked at, and the cause and the effects of these setbacks was, you know, thought about and mitigated through this. And so, I think the best source for this information is what the state has said, a lot of thought has gone into that, and I think it's the best resource we have right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Would anybody else like to address the city council on this?
Good morning, or I'm sorry, good evening, Mr. Mayor, city council.
Be sure to sign the book.
Of course, yes, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I, I too would agree with a lot of what's been said. Cannabis is an emerging business, we need to find a way to regulate and keep a good eye on it. Councilmember Bagby, I appreciate your interest in transparency. I believe even more so, we need consistency. I find it odd, and I'd like the council to ask why. The state is real clear on our setbacks for everything, dispensary, manufacturing business, micro businesses. Why isn't the school board got a setback for micro businesses? I mean, they're 1,000 feet from everything else, why not a microbusiness? And who are we doing a service to by not being consistent? In respect too, to the way that we measure, I there too would like for some consistency. If you're going to use from property line to the steps of one business, and that's what we decide, I'd like to see that opportunity extended to every applicant. If we're going to go from property line to property line, I'd like that to remain consistent. One other thing, you know, in addition to the, to the school board's position, I met with Dr. Harrington, from the Sonoma County Office of Education. He too had some substantial concerns, some question as to why every other type of business cannabis-related has got a setback, but yet that microbusiness, only here in Cloverdale, doesn't. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, council, my name is Carly Warner. I'm a co-founder of Garden Society with my partner Erin Gore. I just wanted to encourage in this process the thought that each cannabis license type is different. So this is not comparing apples to apples, this is comparing apples to oranges. So dispensaries, micro businesses, testing labs, cultivation, they all have different requirements, and they all have different uses for the cannabis plant, and different accessibility. So, I do believe that there's a strong support for considering each license type and the different uses that it has. Just wanted to make that point.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to address the city council? Come on down.
I'll just address the questions about the school board, Preston Addison. The main issue for concern in our discussions at the school board meeting was visibility for our students. So that's, that was the main thing of concern. So an adult dispensary had come on your docket, that was clearly visible from our playground, entrance to our library, entrance to our cafeteria, and that's what raised a concern with the school board and many parents. And that's where we focused our discussions, was that visibility for our students. Open to the public, public's coming and going, students are seeing people coming and going. Like, you've mentioned, everybody knows what's going on inside a dispensary, even though it doesn't have signs advertising what's going on there. So again, the discussion was around students watching members of the community, coming and going all day long, while they're playing basketball in the playground, buying marijuana. So that, that was the focus, and cultivation also came up, because the way we had read the ordinance was that cultivation could be visible. So again, having plants visible, you're nodding your head, but that, that's the way it read in there to us. We didn't have the privilege of having you at our meeting, to clarify. But, the way we read it, cultivation could be visible, it could be outdoor. It says outdoor right here.
So by visible, the school board meant actual plants? Not just like a building that cultivates within?
Yeah, we, we assumed that meant plants.
Okay.
But, I'm just clarifying. So that's, that was our focus, was visibility. The other category is all closed to the public. No public coming and going. So there wasn't the visibility issue with that.
Great. Thank you. Would anybody else like to address the city council? Come on down, sign your name, and
My name's Eric Neal. The council and other folks involved in drafting the ordinance worked for a year and a half, I believe, on that ordinance. And I think that 600 feet was something that was And I think that 600 feet was something that was carefully considered. It's also the state, as has been mentioned, the state setback. I also believe that, as far as the school district is concerned, there is no evidence that a visual ability to see a dispensary at 600 feet is really going to change students' use of marijuana or acceptance of marijuana. It doesn't matter whether it's 600 feet, or 800 feet, or 1,000 feet. There's no evidence that it would make a difference. And the other issue that I was concerned about or thinking about, I support having the event at the citrus fair, but I didn't hear from the school district expressing concern about having a cannabis festival at the citrus fair, right next door to Washington School. So to be consistent, it seems like they would be concerned about that visibility of cannabis as well, but we didn't hear anything. So I felt that was inconsistent. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to address the city council?
Good afternoon, Council. John Lambert. Man, I've had too much coffee today. I'd just like a little bit of clarification on which of these categories that Garden Society falls under. I'm a little bit confused. It looks to me that they fall under the manufacturing and distribution category, and if they do, it sounds like there's a special provision for if you don't have foot traffic, or you don't have advertising, or you don't have people going in and out. I don't see that on this matrix up here. And I'm also curious, if they do fall under the manufacturing/distribution category, which says 600-foot setback, exactly how far are they from property line to property line? Because I don't think we've all heard that yet. At least I haven't.
So we're not going to be talking about specific applications? They're not on the agenda? That's not the decision we're asking?
Well, they're here, talking about that already happening. So I'm just curious, exactly how far is it? And what category are they under?
You could meet with staff tomorrow, they can tell you exactly. Okay? That's not on the agenda, not something we're going to address. Thank you.
Very good.
Would anybody else like to address the city council regarding this issue number two? Okay, see none, we'll close the public input and bring it back to council for deliberation. Who would like to start? Vice Mayor?
Thank you. I'm just trying to find the maps and orient myself. I'm going to jump on somebody. Somebody?
No, no, go right ahead. Go right ahead.
Are you ready?
Okay, yeah. Again, in making a decision about setbacks, I feel like I don't have any real information about what it achieves from a positive point of view. If it's 1,000 feet, that just means there are a few of them in town, from what I can see, and it's harder. And that can be a motivation, and that's fine. But I keep getting back, and I know people sometimes scratch their heads about this, but think about it for a moment. We talk about kids, and I mentioned the fact that you can go into almost any store. You can go into Ray's, you can go into, you know, mom and dad go to get the car filled up, or you're walking home from school or whatever, or going to the park, and you will be able to walk into a multitude of various stores that feature addictive products, that feature tobacco and alcohol and gambling, because the state likes us to gamble. I keep waiting for them to give the money to the schools. Whatever happened to that idea? But at any rate, that's for another time. The reason I bring it up is not to amuse, but because for me, it's a serious question. If I'm making a decision about something, I'm not honest with myself if I don't say, oh, you know, is it okay for people to have signs that tell you how wonderful, I don't know, Schlitz is, or Michelob, or how great it is if you win a few million at the lottery? Is it okay if a kid walks in and sees what I see, which is people underage, quite frankly, buying vaping products? So I have to ask myself, what are we accomplishing? And if it is important that something be 1,000 feet away, then let's talk about all the things that need to be 1,000 feet away. I'm serious. I mean, let's get really serious about it. I don't know that that actually would produce what we hope it would produce, because, to be quite frank, in my own lifetime, I have known families whose kids have just walked into the bathroom in grandma's house and picked up a Vicodin or two. Of course, I know one family where the kid who was going to college picked up his younger brother's Adderall. Elon Musk likes that, doesn't he? It helps him concentrate, I suppose. And I'm not being flip, I'm just bringing it up, because I'm not quite sure what we're doing here.
Well, what we're doing here is, we're being asked, do we want to change it or not?
And that's why I'm bringing up the situation I'm bringing up.
No, I understand, so let's see what some of the other council members have said.
Or honest about it.
Well, I guess, you know, and I take Vice Mayor Russell's comments to heart, because I think that they are valid, and I think that we're mistaking, erring to the side of caution as a remedy, and it isn't necessarily. I have to actually agree with Mr. Caston, is that setbacks are not always the solution. And with all due respect to the school board, I have to say, I disagree with their recommendation, and I just can't support it. I do think that dispensaries are a special case, because as was pointed out by our industry experts, people who have been dealing with these regulations from the state, they're the only public-facing entity or company. And in fact, most of the other uses, from what I understand, they actually do want to, as Kate was saying earlier, they want to remain anonymous, they want to not be seen, they want to be there and not be seen. So I'm fairly happy with the setbacks as they are, because it does allow businesses to exist in this community. If we went to the map of the 1,000-foot setbacks, it looks like we put a reservoir in the middle of town. Whereas, you know, the 600 and then the 200-foot, I think it's adequate, and I'd like to leave, I'm going to come out in support of allowing staff some leniency and leaving it up to their judgment on natural barriers. If there's a hill in between, if, as you walk it, it's over 600 feet, or nearly 1,000 feet, or probably in many cases, you know, closer to 1,500 or 1,800 feet, I think that using common sense and decency is absolutely fine in those issues, and that's what I would like to see. So I'm going to support leaving them as they are, and making some provisions for some flexibility at the staff level. And if they get it madly wrong, I think we're going to hear about it.
So just so I'm clear, and I want to make sure staff's clear, all of them, including dispensaries?
Sorry, all of them. I think that they are.
I just want to be clear.
The setbacks as they are, I'm fine with how they are now, and also in favor of the staff recommendation of having some leniency for geographic reality.
I just wanted to be clear on that. Thank you. Okay, Councilmember Walter.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm quite comfortable with what we have up here. As I stated earlier, I'm more concerned about the waiver process. I appreciate the school board jumping in with their recommendations. The question was asked earlier about the events that might take place at the citrus fair, and, you know, I'd like to see the school board take a position on some other things within the community, not just this. And I assume you're silent on that, because the events will be on the weekend. So, but still, Jeremy, it would be nice if we had some type of statement from the school board. I'm comfortable with this. Like I said, this is a good starting point, we're going to be reviewing the ordinance. Granted, once somebody is permitted, it's very difficult to make them change. They're grandfathered in, so we'll live with it. But I'm comfortable with this, and I want to get to the waiver process.
Okay, thank you. Well, as for me, I still think I'm comfortable with everything but the dispensary one. I personally feel there should be some waivers that could be considered, but I think the 1,000 feet should be the norm, with some exceptions that we would talk about under waivers. If there's a natural hill, if there's a high fence, the entrance is from the back of the building, not the front, that's facing the school, all those could be considered to reduce it. But certainly, I think the 1,000 feet is reasonable. So I do support the school board on that decision. I think it makes sense. So, but that, that's... Anything else on that? Okay, let's move on to issue three.
Issue three shouldn't really take long, it's just basically, we're letting you know we're doing some cleanup with the state regs that are changing. We're not going to be repeating state regs in the ordinance, but we want to just capture, you know, big changes. So if there's any input on that, please give it to us now, but otherwise, we'll just do the cleanup and bring it back for review.
Right. Now, that makes sense, and we'll be doing that frequently, I know, because as the law changes, we have to update our ordinance.
We'll try to broaden the language in some areas, so that we don't have to try to keep coming back, which I think is easy to do.
Thank you. Any questions from council on that? I'll open this up for item number three here, issue three. Does anybody in the public want to address the council on that item? Okay, see none, I'll close the public input, bring it back to council. Anything else? We'll move on to issue four.
This is similar to issue three. This is to address sort of the sub-license types that have been coming out, and unless there's, you know, a consensus of objection from the council on including these in the larger license types, we'd like to amend, you know, put some notations on the land use table, and some broad language in the ordinance to say, you know, distribution shall include transport-only uses as well, just so that applicants are clear what the city's allowing and not.
That's good.
Okay, any questions from council? Okay, I'll open this up for issue number four. Would anybody in the public like to address the council on this item? Yes, come forward, please.
Eric Neal. I have a question about the request for proposal. On page 32 of the ordinance, it states that these Type 12 microbusinesses should be going through a RFP process. And I'm not sure if I'm reading it right, or if it's written incorrectly in that matter, so I don't know.
It's Type 12 microbusinesses if they have a dispensary component? Dispensary is something that's open to the public?
Okay. Yeah, well, okay, so, for example...
We're going to get to the RFP process in a minute. It's a different issue.
I wasn't sure if this was the right place or not.
Yeah, thanks.
Okay, so we'll get you an answer to that. Okay, would anybody else like to address the city council on this issue number four? Okay, see none, I'll close the public input, bring it back to council. Anything else on this? See none?
We have to date with the state.
Move on to number five.
Okay, now we're at your issue, Mr. Neal, issue number five. The dispensary process, the city allows two dispensaries, and one of the cleanup items, to be clarifying that, you know, open to the public, not open to the public, Type 12 microbusiness can have two different types of retail, either delivery-only, where there's no public interaction, we don't really consider that a dispensary, they're just a retail delivery operation. So currently, the ordinance requires anyone who's getting a retail license that's open to the public, that has a dispensary component, including the microbusiness, to go through the city's request-for-proposal process that's in the ordinance, and there's a maximum of two dispensaries allowed. So we wanted to check in with council on whether you want to keep this as is, or change it up.
Okay. Any comments from council yet?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. From my point of view, I'd just like to take this slowly. We are learning as we go along what works and what doesn't. I see no reason why we should rush to add or subtract, let's just see what happens with the one that we have. You know, how does it work out? What are our questions? Again, we need to learn a little bit about this as we go along and collect ourselves. I think we don't want to discourage somebody from applying for that second one, but I wouldn't be in a position to say, well, let's do three. No, we did two, to keep it to a rational number that we could handle, but also, I think, so we could learn as we went along how to change if we had to change our process of evaluation and accepting, because there are some things I'd like to see changed in that process. You know, like, now that we've done it, I'd like to make sure that we have something that is a little more effective. I think we've learned a lot in the last year, and I'd like to make sure that we have that, we formalize it and understand it at council and at staff level before we decide to do anything else. Hopefully, the first one will be successful.
So I'm not clear.
Just leave it as it is.
Leave it as it is.
You know, accept applications for the second one, but don't go rushing into adding more, until we find out what's going on.
Okay, so you're comfortable with that. Any other comments?
No, I'm comfortable with leaving it at two. And I believe, actually, Kate could refresh my memory, and maybe this will help other, you know, members of the audience. The decision to go with two, I think, was based on the state estimate of our population.
Yeah, the decision was influenced sort of by the, you know, the state data on what's over-concentration, what's not for dispensaries, and a lot of cities and counties are using, you know, population as an indicator of how many the market could support, or how many are appropriate, some people might say. So that's part of the reason you all landed on two.
I'm comfortable with staying with that, then.
I'm comfortable with staying on two also. You know, I think to have any more than that, like Councilmember Russell said, until we get our arms around what we're doing, I think two is more than enough for us to handle. It gives that competitive feel to the dispensaries here in Cloverdale. So right now, I'm comfortable with two.
Okay. So I'm going to open it up, but I just want to just, I think we need to somehow be a little clearer in our ordinance dealing when an RFP is required and when one is not required. And I know it says it, but I think it needs to say it where it's really clear.
Exactly, yeah, I agree.
So I just want to make that comment, so when you go back to revise that, because I understand if they're not a dispensary, the RFP, so the microbusiness does not need to go through the RFP, and it's got to be very clearly stated.
Understood, yeah.
Okay. I'm going to open this up for the public. Would anybody like to address the city council on this item? Please come forward.
Good evening. My name's Joe Gustly, I'm a resident here, and my question regards the permitting process for commercial dispensaries. My recollection is that the previous city council developed very specific criteria for permitting these dispensaries, and a vote was taken then, and the specific criteria were not utilized by half of the city council. And I want to know if that permitting process for commercial dispensaries can be made public, and the decisions that are being made using those criteria could be made public. Is that clear?
Yeah, let our city attorney address that.
We had an RFP, a request for proposals, that was issued. The ordinance and all of the requirements that they have to include on their application for dispensaries is public, it's in the packet, it's on the website. We had a request for proposals that was sent out, it was on the website, and anyone, it was an open application period. All of those applications are public records, minus certain parts of them, like their security plan or personal information, that could be, you know, a privacy issue. So that's all public. The scoring was included in the staff report that was presented to council in March of this year, the total scores that each was given from staff. There was a staff recommendation based on that scoring that council could consider, or throw out the window if they chose. The decision was up to council, so it was more of just, here's the staff recommendation, here's the scores that were reached after review of the applications and interviews. So all of that was quite public. Is there a particular part of it that...
Right. The part I guess I didn't understand was the fact that they could just throw out the criteria and make decisions based on biases instead.
So council made a decision, and my recollection of the discussion that happened involved many parts and lots of feedback on all the specifics of the ordinance, including security, operations plan, capital to operate a business, all of those things that are part of the requirement. So I'm not sure if, I can't really comment on your opinion, but...
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. Daniel Frankston. I'm a member of the Cal Wellness team. We were one of the three applicants for a dispensary, and many of the city staff here will know me from January and February, the application process and the interview process. The council members will recognize me from the discussions that happened here in March with regards to the recommendations. But I was actually following the activities here for many months beforehand, and I really just wanted to commend all of you for the thoughtful process by which this was undertaken. I mean, it's clear to me that you... it's a very complicated and difficult issue, and it's clear to me that you're all approaching it in a well-reasoned manner, trying to balance various different aspects. There's obviously community concerns with regards to dispensaries and the impact that it'll have, and I think in general, you've been excellent in striking a good balance with that. Back in April, when you decided to take a pause with that, I commended you for doing that, and we're, what, about six months out from the initial hearings with regards to that, and it's clear to me that you're still taking that approach, and quite honestly, I think that's highly commendable. We would love to have been granted a permit in March and be operating today, but the truth of the matter is, is we're not coming to Cloverdale to try and open up a quick dispensary. We want to come here for the long haul, and as I indicated to you in April, we... I'm not from Cloverdale. Originally, I'm from New York City. My parents grew up on the coast in Mendocino, but I've been driving through Cloverdale many times over the years, and ultimately, our desire is to come to Cloverdale, to relocate. My partner and I, she would be the person who would actually run the dispensary, so we'd be in a situation where we'd have a lot of women running dispensaries, which I think is a good thing. But I just wanted to let you know that Cal Wellness is still very interested in trying to obtain a license here in Cloverdale and to operate it, and we'd like to do that because we're in it for the long haul, and we think it'd be good for the community to have some infusion from outside, to be able to come in. And as I stated, you know, our desire and intention is to make this our home, and with the council's blessings, we hope to be able to do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to address the city council on this item? Yes, come forward, please.
Mr. Mayor, thank you. I'd like to echo a lot of what the gentleman from Cal Wellness said. Thank you. This has been a very challenging... we've been at this a long time. I want to apologize, too. It's been complicated. You're talking about people's livelihoods. You're talking about people's lives, and a lot of these folks have been in this line of work for decades, and now, we're trying to normalize it and, you know, make it work for everyone. So, I do appreciate the council very much for your time and what you've put into this. I would, though, like to ask a question specific to issue number five. Delivery service. At present, I... and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Kelly, an applicant can't apply for a delivery service only.
Yes, they can.
They can't?
Yes.
So, we've gotten the fees? That's all worked out?
So, let the city attorney address that.
Oh, they can. It's in the same...
Speak into the mic, please.
It's in the same category of businesses as manufacturers, distributors, delivery, micro business. It's all in that one part of the ordinance. You can... just like at the state, you can have a delivery-only business, that business is also permitted in the city.
Oh, very good. I'm sorry, for a long time, that was just "to be determined." I never really heard that. And there was some questions...
Delivery into the city from an outside business is to be determined on our fee chart right now.
Okay.
Because there was not... there was... the council hadn't made a decision on whether it was appropriate to charge a, you know, a permit fee or a business license to a business that's going to be permitted elsewhere as well.
Yes, ma'am. Of course.
But if your brick-and-mortar location is in Cloverdale and you're a delivery-only business, you can get a permit. It's on our land use chart, and it's in our ordinance.
Fantastic. No limit on delivery services? And those delivery services do not count as a dispensary, correct?
That is true.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions from members of the public? Would anybody else like to address the city council? Seeing none, I'll close the public comment. Bring it back to council. Okay, we'd like to start.
I'm good.
Got to do it.
So, it sounds like there's a consensus... staff, I... there's a consensus here, I think, to keep it at two, and to make sure the RFP. Council member Russell would like to maybe... maybe a subcommittee could look at the process of the current application, the process, just to kind of maybe fine-tune that a little bit, and the rest of it, it looks like it's still good.
Mayor, council, we certainly understand the direction regarding the number of dispensaries, and it's clear that council supports keeping it at the maximum number of two. I do want to note that that does not obligate you as a council...
No.
...to issue two permits.
No.
That just sets forth the maximum.
Maximum.
As this council knows, flowing from the ordinance and all of its requirements, staff developed a very extensive RFP process, and that was based on feedback during development of the ordinance, and it was embodied in the ordinance's language. However, the RFP and all its requirements and its ranking and its weighting was developed independently of the ordinance, but it was brought back to council for review and approval. One of the things staff is seeking is if you... if you... at this time, you want to provide, you know, explicit direction to staff relative to the RFP process itself. You know, if you're so direct, you'd like to have that RFP reviewed by subcommittee, we can certainly do that. We can also bring that RFP back to council to revise and update us accordingly, but if there's any direction that you'd like us to provide to us on the RFP, the RFP process, you know, there's an opportunity. Obviously, we could continue as we develop and make these changes to the ordinance, see that through, or, you know, allow an RFP process to be reopened and continued.
If I might, Mr. Mayor, what I'm seeking, now that we have some experience in it, is to be sure that we do everything we possibly can to eliminate subjectivity and to have very specific criteria and have proof that someone either met or did not meet that criteria. For example, the staff here and the council know how crazy I get with the kind of reviews that everybody has once a year. If you went to work in the sixties and seventies and eighties, you remember that? Once a year, they'd come in and review you, and somebody would give you a one through five or a one through six, or very good, good, bad, excellent, whatever. And a lot of that stuff is purely something somebody pulls out of their brain, out of their hat. One person's two is another person's five. You know? One person's excellent is another person's... okay. I want to avoid that. I want to make sure that when we look at the review process, we know that there are specific things we have to do to demonstrate that we have not been dazzled by somebody's footwork, or perhaps maybe a little prejudice against something else, because that's normal. It's all part of being human. I'd like our attorney to look at it, and I'd like our financial person to look at it. For example, one of the things that struck me, and I'm just going to use a little history here, and some of you will go, "Oh, God, here she goes again." I don't want to see... I don't want to see the process as elaborate as it is and as well-thought-out as it is. Hand something to me, or I look at the first sheet of paper that I look at and go, "That's weird. The numbers don't add up." We have to have very specific rules and regulations about how do we review materials that are given to us, and who does that review? For example, who reviews the financial end? Who reviews the background end? Who does, you know, who does some reference checking, that kind of thing? And I think those are the things that we need to do to make sure that we are being fair and we are being equitable, but at the same time, to avoid the kinds of problems we had with the last go-around.
Okay. I don't... I don't think we had a lot of problems last time. I think the process went very thorough. I think staff, through the process, did a very commendable job for the first time. I think we all learned a lot. I think there's room for improvement. Don't misunderstand me.
No.
But what I'm saying, for the first shot, I think staff did a commendable job. I would just like to make sure that no RFP comes to the council that doesn't meet every condition within the ordinance.
That's a good point.
And that's the key right there. I think there could be some feelings that, well, maybe the council might want to consider something. I don't think that should be the position at all. They either meet it, or they don't, and that's staff's responsibility to make that call.
So...
And certainly, it could be appealed to the council, and we certainly can hear the appeal, but I don't think it should come... we don't feel this one's strong, but we want you to make the call.
Okay. So, based on what I'm hearing, would it make sense to have an ad... a temporary ad hoc from council, sit down with staff, and just look at the RFP and how we laid out the point, process, and the requirements, and get some feedback on maybe fine-tuning it?
Yes, it would.
Excellent.
Yes, it would.
And then come back before we decide to reopen it?
Yes.
Yes, it would.
Soon, though, not to drag it out.
Right.
Okay. Got it.
Got it. Go ahead, council member Walter.
Well, Mr. Mayor, with all due respect to the ad hoc committee, you know, it has to be sooner rather than later, because there's potentially three new council members coming up here. One of the things that I'm not sure, you know, for discussion, hopefully within the next month or so, is the utilization of our planning commissioners a little more than what we've been using them for now. I'm not sure if they have the qualifications, from a legal standpoint, to serve as an ad hoc advisory committee to the city council. A lot of them have a lot of tenure, and I think a lot of knowledge and background about this subject, and because three of us may be in jeopardy, maybe we use a couple of planning commissioners. Just a thought.
Well, I think that's a good conversation for the ad hoc to have, is the process.
Okay.
Okay? And I don't see this coming back to the city council in the next month. There's a lot of work that needs to be done based on this, so it's going to be a while. Anything else on this item number five? Yes?
I just want to, again, commend staff. Having reviewed the job that staff did and knowing what the criteria was, I thought that they did an exemplary job, and there's always room for improvement. You can always improve a form. You can always improve an interview, and I would have to agree with Mayor Paula. I don't... I believe that, you know, if an applicant does not meet a minimum requirement, that doesn't need to move forward, and I would like to see that implemented in the future.
Well, that's exactly what I'm bringing up, is that we know what the minimum requirements are, and we know how we choose them and don't choose them, and we avoid, you know, good, excellent, and poor kinds of things that just make people crazy.
Okay. Thank you.
Let's do it.
Okay. Any other comments from council? We'll move on. Let's take a five-minute break. We've been about two hours and twenty minutes.
That's wrong.
We'll take, and then we'll go to item number six. Thank you.
That's a... Thank you.[1353.86]
Yeah.
Fifteen seconds. Five seconds.
Okay. I'm going to reconvene the city council meeting, and we're going to pick up where we left off and start a discussion on issue number six.
Mayor, members of council, at this time for item number six, I'd really like to direct your attention to your land use table. What staff is seeking your feedback on is the review of license type allowed by zoning district. The staff is specifically referenced for, as an example, whether council supports dispensaries in the downtown commercial zoning district. That is just one example of what we're seeking your feedback on. I mean, other examples could include whether you want to continue to allow commercial cultivation within the rural residential zoning district, whether you would like to continue allowing, you know, non-volatile manufacturing within the general commercial, service commercial zoning district, and, you know, each of those permitted uses by zoning district. And I can walk you through it if you like, or just really seek your general feedback if there are any specific zoning districts that you're concerned about, or specific uses within those zoning districts.
Okay, thank you. It's the pleasure of the council on this one.
I don't have any questions per se, but I do have some comments, but I would, sorry. I'm kind of, I'd like to get feedback from the, from the public, find out if there are any questions, but I don't have any technical questions at this time.
Okay, very well, thank you. You good? You good? Okay. I'm going to open this up for public input on this issue number six. Would anybody like to address the city council on our zoning? We're going to be talking about this.
Good evening, council. My name's Michelle Winterbottom. On the zoning, are you talking about changing the zoning on the ones that have already provided RFPs for their businesses? And if so, then I don't agree with that. I think that whatever business is in the zone today in your ordinance and in the zoning ordinance, then they should be approved. And then if you choose to, to do it later, then do it later and not allow them in that, in the other areas. But as far as the ones that have already submitted their RFPs according to the ordinance and not been provided any permit per se, they should stay.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to address the city council on this regarding zoning? Okay, seeing none, I'll close the public comment, bring it back to council. My understanding that the question before the council is, do we have any requests? Do we want to see any of these changed? All right.
I have some concerns.
Go ahead, please.
You know, the first time I reviewed this on council, I asked a question, I didn't get it adequately answered at all. I have never understood why we've allowed any of the uses in the transit-oriented commercial area. That area was specifically designated to support our transit station. It's supposed to be for transit-oriented commercial, supposed to be for possibly transit-oriented housing. And given what we know now, that everything except dispensaries is not a public-facing business, and clearly, I don't think we would want to have dispensaries as a use because it's not trans- it's not a transit-oriented business. I'd have to respectfully disagree with Ms. Winterbottom. This is the time to review this ordinance, and I think that that was a grave oversight at the time. Considering that, along with that, I would like to see them also eliminated from the downtown commercial. Downtown commercial is supposed to be pedestrian-oriented, pedestrian-friendly downtown retail. And everything, again, except dispensaries, are not open to public business, types of businesses. And I voiced this over a year ago, and I have to stand by it, that I just, I don't think that they're appropriate uses for those two zoning areas. So I'd like to see those, like, seeing them removed from those two areas.
Okay. Anything else from council?
Well, Mr. Mayor, you know, at the planning commission meeting, there was, I think, one, maybe two, planning commissioners that did not agree that they should be in our downtown commercial. And, you know, I voted for the approval of those because I voted for this map. I'm still okay with it. I do agree with you, Melanie, as far as the transit-oriented businesses. Michelle brings up a good point. I think the one applicant that we still have in the process should be grandfathered in. It shouldn't stay with the land, it should stay with the applicant. So if that land is ever sold, then it would not qualify as a location under the transit-oriented use, so. But I could support those changes with you.
Okay, vice mayor.
Fine, yeah, I can see the argument about transit-oriented commercial, and I don't have a problem with that change. But I agree with Councilmember Walter, and I thought he expressed it well.
On which point, council?
On the point about...
Grandfathering.
Yeah, the zoning area, yeah. I'm just concerned, I think it is true that especially as we move more and more, trying to do something with that whole transit issue, I keep anticipating SMART and various other things happening. And it may not be for a while, but hopefully before the 2020s are over, we will, we will see it here. It looks like the money is coming. And we might want to consider, yeah, what we really want in that area. So that doesn't, but I wouldn't see any other change.
Okay, thank you. So, well, the way I look at it, we put it on hold for a reason so we can go back and review it, to make sure it's still what we thought we wanted it to be. And I have to say, I agree with Councilmember Bagby. I really don't think it's appropriate to have it in the downtown commercial or in the transit-oriented commercial. You know, we put it on hold because we took our best guess, we went through all the facts, tried to put together the best action plan. But we have an opportunity to tweak it before something gets into something that we may not want. This is the time to do it. Not wait till grandfather somebody in, they get in, and then they're there for 20 years. What's the point? So it just seems to me, if that's really where we're in agreement, we don't want something, we need to make that call today before it gets in there. So I feel we should move forward with those two. Yeah.
Can I see some clarification on the direction here?
So, well, you heard it, so I don't know if you agree with that or not.
Well, the only thing I would like, I could support the changes and doing away with them, but I don't think it's fair to the applicant who has the application already in the pipeline to all of a sudden have a location yanked out from under them. Again, I don't think the qualifier, the approval should go with the property, it goes with the application. So if that application is never approved, then the new owner cannot do a dispensary there. So that's just the way I feel about it.
And I agree with that.
So I'm hearing all four of you are in favor of eliminating the dispensary use in the TOD.
And commercial.
And downtown commercial. But there's only two of you in favor of grandfathering in an applicant, so that would not get added at this point.
Maybe I'm not clear on the applicant. You're referring to the two applicants that are in pending that?
One of the two pending applicants is in the TOD. They do not have a vested right, they don't have any permit. But there's two of you who are expressing an interest in sort of grandfathering them in, since when they applied and put all that work into the application, it was allowed in that area.
And assuming that they meet the other qualifications.
Yeah, they have to meet it all, obviously.
And I'd just like to clarify that, there were two dispensary proposals submitted, one in a downtown commercial zoning district and one in a TOD zoning district.
Right.
And so, based on council saying you'd like to see both of those proposals have grandfather provisions, because at the time when they applied, it was a permitted use subject to council approval.
Yes.
That's my feelings as a yes. And once again, to reiterate, it stays with the application, it doesn't go with the real estate.
That's a very good point.
I'm willing to live with that.
That's three one. I guess, you know, from what I'm hearing, it seems like we've made a decision as a council that we're not going to reopen the RFP process. We're going to look at these existing two, not reopen it because we're focusing around the two that are out there. I haven't heard that decision made yet, that, how we're going to move forward with the second RFP. So I guess that's what I'm trying to struggle with. It's insinuating to me that that decision's been made, and I don't think it has been made.
Mayor, I think you're correct, the decision hasn't been made, and council hasn't provided that direction. I think if we reopen the RFP process, it would be open to all parties to reapply, but only the two parties that had submitted applications within those zoning districts. With the changes, should they be made upon final adoption? You know, we bring back ordinance that reflects your policy discussion tonight. Those two could still move forward. Other applicants, however, within those zoning districts would not be permitted to apply because they would not be considered grandfathered in.
Right.
But, you know, other applicants could apply in other zoning districts should, again, council finalize that RFP and grant us authority to reopen it.
We're not limited to issuing a permit to any of the candidates that are still in the pool. When we move forward, they just don't have to reapply again, they're already in there.
So the ordinance has a provision that says if a commercial cannabis permit for dispensary becomes available, meaning you open up the process again and give that decision, which you haven't yet, is my understanding, within 12 months of a previous application period, city staff may first review all minimally qualified applications from the prior application process and consider them for submittal to the city council prior to opening a new application process. So it does, we would seek direction on that, but it does allow for staff to, instead of redoing that entire process, which was very intensive, very time-consuming, lots of meetings, police review, finance review, you know, we went through each part of it. It allows us that freedom just to look at those ones left in the pool and bring them back to you, if you want to give out that other permit, or...
If we want to open it again, right.
So there's two ways you can go on that. There's more than one, I guess there's a couple of things we need direction on.
Well, without delving into the, into the details, Kate, you know, one of the applicants was, didn't score properly and should have never been submitted to the city council anyhow. And the other one, I'm not, I can't quite remember whether all the Ts were crossed and the Is were dotted, but if I remember correctly, we would probably have to open it up to a new RFP because I don't think either one of those qualified.
So, what's, so we have, you know, are you, let's go through it one more time so we can move on. You're good with the grandfathering?
I'm, yeah, I'm okay with that.
I'm okay with the grandfathering.
Yeah. You're okay with it?
So however that process gets opened up again, the grandfathering would apply just to those applicants?
Yes.
Okay.
And just for the next process?
Yes.
If it happens within the next, before it expires?
Before the year.
Okay.
Yes.
But the council is clear...
It wouldn't carry over to the next cycle?
Okay.
Council's clear that they want to eliminate permitted cannabis uses within the...
Dispensaries.
Oh, dispensaries within the downtown commercial and TOD zoning district.
Yes.
Yes. Any other uses that, because in TOD, we also permit some nursery, a nursery use, and...
I'm sorry, I'm sorry if I was not clear. I was, I'm, I'm sorry if I wasn't clear. My concern was is that they're not appropriate, that they're not consistent. None of the conditional uses are consistent with transit-oriented and downtown commercial. That was my concern.
All cannabis uses?
Yeah, all cannabis uses. Because I think we've become, and here's my reasoning, and this is my reasoning over a year ago when I brought this up, is that we have set transit-oriented commercial up in support of the SMART station, and we've set downtown commercial up in support of retail-friendly, pedestrian-friendly, those types of businesses. And everything except dispensaries are completely closed to the public. They're not consistent with the uses that we're trying to designate for those zoning interests. So I was interested in eliminating all use, all of the CPs from both of those districts. And if there's a differing opinion on it, council, that's, that's fine, but that was my intent.
Okay.
I understood what you were saying there.
The first time?
Yeah, well, I knew you said all of them.
Yes.
All right, move on to item, issue number seven.
Okay, so issue number seven is the issue of what, we'd like to get feedback on whether there's an interest from council in expanding the distance requirement waiver that we have beyond dispensaries and beyond just the two we do allow currently to provide some more flexibility in allowing more businesses, more locations in the city. And specifically currently, like I said earlier, you know, the dispensary distance requirement that they be 600 feet from another dispensary, that can be waived. And the residential buffer of 100 feet for a dispensary-only public, you know, open to the public, can be waived if there are actual physical separations between the uses. And we're asking if you want to expand that, you know, to other uses beyond dispensaries. And also if that's the case, we would recommend kind of making that language more detailed and more clear based on experience in other jurisdictions that I work with on cannabis. And the more detailed the language on what, what is a physical separation, what's a barrier, what, you know, what meets that standard is very important, otherwise there's just too much gray area.
Well, that was my question, was what exactly are we talking about? A garage, a park?
So the language that I'm suggesting would say that, you know, if you wanted to be fit up, it would say that an applicant would have to clearly show that an actual impassable physical separation exists between the land uses such that no negative off-site impacts could occur that would result in harm or likely, you know, to the public health, safety, welfare, all that. And that the available legal walking path between the uses is at least the same distance as the requirement requested to be waived unless state law prohibits otherwise. And then I give, there's examples, and examples of impassable physical separation include, but aren't limited to, a major road or highway, buildings, thick vegetation, walls, fences, at least seven feet high. And it says, "In cases of a waiver request under this section where it's not objectively clear that it's more likely than not that the standard's met, the city manager can sort of elevate the application to the council for a decision on that waiver." That's just in suggestive language, it's entirely up to you if you like it or don't like it.
Well...
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, I guess the waiver that I have a problem with is the residential. You know, I didn't buy my house to have a cannabis business move in within 100 feet. And if I have to live with the 100 feet, that's fine, but all of a sudden, the city's turning around, giving waivers, you know, so what's the sense of having it? If it's another business, I, you know, I can understand that. But when it comes to the residence, I think the residents need to have buy-in for that business that's going to go next to them. So, you know, for us to make a residential waiver of the 100 feet, I'd like to see letters of support from the neighborhood saying with X, Y, and Z, with a fence, with bushes, whatever, you know, okay, we'll cut it down to 80 feet. Otherwise, I think the 100 feet should stay. It needs community support for the residents. They were here first. If they bought their house after the cannabis business... If they bought their house after the cannabis business was there, that's one thing, but for the cannabis business to come in and tread on their 100-foot setback, I think is not the right thing to do.
For all, are you referring to all cannabis businesses, council member, or simply dispensaries?
No, I think, I think basically all of them.
Okay.
Councilmember Baker.
I just, a question of clarification, because we're mostly using dispensaries in this example, so is it referring exclusively to dispensaries, or does it include other licenses? I'm not clear on that.
So, the options that we presented are to leave it as is, where those two waivers would only be available with the dispensary, or option number two would be to expand that language to allow waivers to all distance requirements for dispensaries and/or other uses, or apply similar distance, you know, waiver language to other commercial cannabis uses in addition to dispensaries. So, you can keep it as is, expand it just for this use, or apply it to other uses as well?
Did you have a comment?
Yeah, I have the same confusions, and I'm looking at things like thick vegetation, I'm just looking at wording and thinking, never stop me. I don't, I don't quite understand it, so I'm not sure that I, I want to vote on it. I need a lot more study on this.
Okay, that's fair. I'm going to open this up for public input. Would anybody like to address the city council on issue number seven? Please come forward.
Sure.
Yes, please sign in and state your name for the record.
Okay, good evening again. My name is Julie Mercer Ingram, and I am an attorney in Santa Rosa. As you all just decided for very valid reasons to further restrict the zoning available for cannabis businesses, I encourage you to adopt the proposed language for all uses so that staff has a tool to allow cannabis in the remaining zoning that's still on the table. Given the limited property inventory in those zones, it really is restricting the ability for businesses to establish themselves here. So, with reasonable accommodations to residential properties, and your recommendations seem quite reasonable, I think that this could really work to give staff the tools they need to carefully evaluate each project as a project-by-project evaluation should be, but to also give them tools to consider various considerations that are proposed, such as walls and fences, and buy-in from the neighbors. So, I'll just put that out there, and thank you for your time.
Thank you.
And just to make it clear, if I could, Mr. Mayor, you know, I, I think the residential rights for me come above and beyond the cannabis business. I mean, it's an accommodation we're making, but those folks live here, they're citizens, and, you know, we have to respect their, their rights when they bought their homes.
Thank you. Okay, anybody else want to address, please, go ahead.
Please, Mr. Mayor, city council, city staff. I would like to also ask that you be considerate of exactly what it is that we're doing, and whose goals is it that we're trying to achieve. I think that as a community, we probably have very similar goals in respect to cannabis. We'd like to see the black market perhaps one day go away. We'd like to have more regulation, more control, and I'm not sure that the approach that you're taking is going to support that. The tougher you make it, the less people will comply. Currently, you have a couple of applicants that are really hanging in limbo. You are having a devastating effect on people's lives. To eliminate the downtown core, to eliminate the TOD, to offer waivers for one applicant and not the other, it almost looks as though we're drafting ordinances specific to applicants. I'd like to see a little more consistency, a little more open-mindedness to what it is at the end goal. The end goal is that you put these folks to work. The end goal is that we begin to address the issues that surround cannabis when it is unregulated, when we cannot take control. There has been a lot of nonsense leading up to tonight. I'd like to see that stop. Again, we're having a devastating effect on a lot of people's lives. You know, Miss Gore Garden Society, they've been in that building now a long time because of what we've done, because of the approach we've taken, we're really making a mess. And it's becoming, to me and my impression, as though that there's a personal bias that's beginning to develop up there on that council. So, please, if we could, take that out of the equation, okay? Don't make it about me, don't make it about another council member, don't make it about a particular project. Be consistent, be honest and transparent for every applicant. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Walter, you have a comment?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Sean, I too wish the silliness would stop, the accusation of favoritism to one over the other. I don't sit up here on this dais to show favoritism to anyone. And, and I think any cannabis business that's issued a license in the city of Cloverdale needs to understand that it's a 12-month license. So, just because you're issued the license, it doesn't mean it's going to last in perpetuity. You know, there's certain things that we're going to be expecting from those businesses, and if they don't comply, the license will not be reissued. So, as far as lives and the balance, we're trying to do the best job we can.
Thank you.
Your accusations of favoritism with emails, conversations, that's got to stop.
It does. And unfortunately, Councilmember Walter, it's kind of a collective effort amongst all of us.
Yeah.
What I'm making the point of is that I'm ready. This has gone on too long. And a very good point as well, Councilmember Walter, that this does have a considerable amount of oversight. You can, you can pull those permits at any time. Why would you want to restrict those from having an opportunity if you know that the control that you have over yanking those permits back is so substantial? How do we even be.
Sean, you got to sum up, okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members. Nick Caston again. Obviously, there's a whole bunch of things that I'm not aware of going on right now, but I just wanted to talk about the setbacks and the waiver. I think one of the important things to note about land use is that no parcels is that same size, we haven't been built in specific grids, or we can say this, we're going to put this, or that, or the other thing, which is what we often try to do in zoning codes. And, you know, I want to return to the concept of setbacks being a good safe harbor, but not necessarily a good absolute policy. You create that bright line, and then your staff and you can no longer take into consideration the specifics of a parcel, the specifics of the character of a neighborhood or a block. And so, I would encourage you to give staff the leniency of the waiver language that they're requesting, and suggest kind of a reverse, instead of needing the applicant to come up with all of the neighbors to support the project, provide notice within X number of feet, usually three to 600 feet, and if there's no objections received, allow it to move forward to staff, and if there are objections received from those neighbors, then maybe escalate it to the planning commissioner yourselves to allow for that discretion, but also allow for site-specific considerations. Thank you.
Thank you.
Terry Conway, resident of Cloverdale again, and I would just say that for these reasons and others, I think there's no better tool to hand city staff than an objective ruler to be able to evaluate a permit application. So many feet for such a use, and property line to property line measurement, and, and there's no gray area, there's nothing that has to be, that has to come back to council for review because of a rejection of an applicant. So, I think objectivity is, is in our favor here.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to address the city council on this item?
Hi, John again. I'd like to say you guys are doing a great job tonight. I'm really happy with the way everything's going, I think it's a good dialogue, I think everybody's been very respectful, and I'd like to just remind everybody that I'm running for city council, and if elected, I'm going to focus real hard on bringing a lot of other businesses to Cloverdale besides cannabis, which I think would be.
Thank you, John.
A nice thing.
Would anybody else like to address, are you, okay, thank you. Would anybody else like to address the city council on this item before I close it? Okay, CNN, I'm going to close the public comment, bring it back to council. It's your pleasure. Would you like to start?
Certainly. I'm, you know, carefully considering all of the testimony tonight, and one of the things that really, you know, stuck with me was when the school board said that their main concern was visibility. So, it's my, it's my, it's my opinion, and it's only my opinion, but it seems to me that, you know, mandated setbacks that are strictly adhere, you know, where you're strictly adhering property line to property line, it leaves no room for subjectivity. I mean, if we lived in Albuquerque or Savannah where we had a planned grid, it might work really well, but, you know, we're this crazy north-south oriented town along the 101 and the Russian River and the hills and everything. So, just, you know, just geographically, doing, you know, squares and circles just doesn't make sense for us. So, what I'd like to see is the spirit of the concerns from the, the public that we've been listening to for two years, which is cannabis is legal, and it's a, we want to bring it out of the dark and into the light, and we want to make it, you know, a safe part of, a safe and sane part of our economy here, but we want to protect sensitive receptors. But, you know, a 600-foot rule doesn't protect a sensitive receptor, or it doesn't do anything to protect it if, you know, there's a hill between the school and the site. So, I just, I would, I'm kind of leaning toward the, I guess it's option two language to be more subjective, and I, I think that a really good suggestion was bring the planning commission into this, and let's use them for some of the heavy lifting to see if it, the applications and the sites comply with the, this, you know, if they don't completely comply with the letter of the law, let's see if they comply with the spirit of the law. And I would, I'm just leaning toward that, especially since we are getting all cannabis uses out of downtown core as well as transit-oriented development, I think it only makes sense to be, you know, more flexible in, with, with some of our other areas, and so that's, that's how I'd like to see us move.
Thank you. Councilmember Walter?
Well, you know, my big concern is residential. As I stated before, if it doesn't comply, then they need the buy, any business would need the buy-in of the residents to some extent. You know, I think we can all agree, it's, it's our responsibility, of course, along with the school district, to protect the children. The next one is library, parks, youth centers, that's our responsibility to make sure we're protecting. But when it comes to residential, you know, I think we have to listen to those folks when we're getting ready to grant a waiver because it's not 100 feet, it's 90, or it's 80, you know, we have to respect that right of the residential owner. If, if, if the business that wants to go in there gets the buy-in from the community and gets some support for it, that's fine. If the people sell their homes and somebody new moves in, you know, they move in with the understanding that this is the business right next to them. So, I'm just concerned about the residential. The children, the youth, I mean, all that will take care of itself, so.
Thank you. Bye, Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I agree with Councilmember Walter about the residential, I'm always very sensitive to that. I don't like to change zonings suddenly on people, which is basically what you're doing there. At the same time, I'm okay with waivers, provided that we really review how our evaluation system works. And I'm not looking to give a waiver all of a sudden to everybody, on the other hand, if we are taking away certain areas of the city, yes, I want to be able to give other areas of the city the opportunity to benefit from this and our economy, and I don't want to discourage people in the cannabis industry from coming in, because I think, I think that would be a mistake, and I don't think it will do anybody any good. So, yeah, I, I could go with number two, provided that, again, I like the idea of bringing in the planning commission because that's what this is, this is part of planning and land use and economic development, and I think we need as many brains here as we can possibly get. But again, we need to know why we're making the waiver or why we are denying it, and that's what concerns me. I don't want to see us suddenly getting sued because somebody says, you should have given me the waiver you gave it, that that went over there and you didn't give it to me. That's why I keep saying I want to see some of our evaluations and our criteria on paper, and things that are very strict, that aren't really open to somebody questioning our reasoning. And so, I think, yeah, we can move to this, I'm not sure we want to, I'm not sure we want to jump into it all that quickly, though. So, I would go with number two, provided that.
Number two.
We have that ad hoc working on what I've asked it to work on.
Number two is talking about dispensaries?
Yes.
Are you, you're, number three's talking about all and other commercial?
Yeah, yeah, for me, it's everything. I mean, I think as long as you're, dispensary to the ones who get beaten up.
I think you're referring to number three then.
Well, but I'm, what I'm saying, yeah, but I, I'm going to go with number two, simply because we can start with that, and then we can always expand it into number three. I don't want to jump into that right away.
Okay, all right.
All right. Oh, my goodness, here, okay. Let's hear from the public, yes, I would go with number two at this point.
We heard from the public already?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Maybe he wants to talk.
So, we closed the public input on this one already? No, so, so I'm, you know, I'm, I think I could go with number three as well. I think we need to allow a degree of discretion, but I think it's important, and I use this school, what I mentioned earlier when we were talking about dispensaries and the school's recommendation of 1,000, which I support, with possible exceptions based on the impassable physical separations that this is referencing. So, I mean, the visibility issue was the big, big reason why the school board and I support that, I think the visibility is important, but if there's a physical barrier that prevents that at 800 feet, then I think that should be taken into consideration as well. So, I think I could support number three as well.
So, several of you have mentioned the planning commission as the reviewing body, perhaps then with an appeal to the council, or no, just planning commission, final decision on these waivers, or what's the.
In the beginning, we should do, I mean.
Pleasure.
Let's do this so we're as open as we possibly can be at the beginning, we can learn from it, we can always change, that's what we're doing now.
I'm comfortable with, yeah, the, of the review going, because that's what we do with, with permits that are. That's, that's what we do with the planning commission, and when the appeal, the appeal process, it comes back to the council, so I think that that's consistent and appropriate.
So, what we're saying is, I guess, if there's an application and we're looking at a waiver, the planning commission would have to review that waiver request, is that what we're talking about? Okay.
And if they're, if they're still denied, they have an appeals process to the council, because that's how we do other procedures.
Okay. Okay, are you good with that?
I'm fine with number three.
Are you fine with number three?
I'll go along with it, I'm not happy, but I'll do it, just, I want to get rid of it, let's go.
All right, so, number three.
Move too quickly.
Thank God this meeting's being taped, huh, David?
So, I want to go ahead and move to item number, issue number eight. David?
Mayor, council, issue number eight is in regards to the Bureau of Cannabis Control Regulation, Section 5005, which provides for, provides a prohibition from certain individuals either that are elected or appointed from, from holding licenses that apply through the state. And the question and recommendation for the council is to consider whether, whether to add a similar provision to our cannabis ordinance. It, it does appear that when the regulations were originally drafted, that there may have been some intent of the state to draft it to apply to, to the city council and their appointed officials, but it was not explicit, and it doesn't state that, and it's not, not the case. However, you as a, as a governing body for the city of Cloverdale and development of your ordinance, and revision of your ordinance, have the opportunity to implement a similar requirement in, in your ordinance. Generally, staff does think that this is, this is a good idea, not just with respect to cannabis permits, but other types of entitlements, because frankly, it does put staff in an awkward position in granting such a significant type of permit to an official that otherwise is also. is also a direct boss for your staff.
Okay. Thank you. City council. Questions, comments?
You know, I'm really in favor of this. You know, when we first did our walkthrough with our ordinance, there were some accusations being made out there in the community that we weren't probably as transparent as we should be. Some individuals felt that it was tainted. I just feel that by having something like this in place, any elected official to the city of Cloverdale, appointed city employee, spouse thereof, can have no vested interest in the cannabis business in the city of Cloverdale. I just really think that's extremely important. You know, there are certain projects around town, real estate projects, people ask me, "How the heck was that ever built, or how was that ever approved?" I bite my tongue, because I know how they were approved. I'm going back maybe 20, 30 years at some of the structures we have in town. I don't want anybody coming back at me saying, you know, "How did that individual craft the ordinance and then be able to own the business as well?" So I just think this is important safeguard into the future. Kate, you look puzzled.
I just wanted to clarify, just make sure we're just talking about the cannabis ordinance and cannabis permits right now.
Yes.
Thank you. And this regulation in the state regs, it's a little strange how they wrote it, because it says that no elected or appointed official from the state or its political subdivisions may be a permit holder if their duties involve enforcement, which elected officials often do with appeals to citations and things like that, or drafting the regs. But political subdivisions, that's counties, that's not cities. People often think that includes cities, and I think they may be messed up, but it's not clear, because then they do apply it to city police employees and city attorneys, say, "We couldn't hold licenses," but they don't address city council. So it's currently not the law, but if you wanted to add something into your local ordinance, you could.
I would like to see it.
This only applies to the officials, not family members, from what I can tell.
Well, I think it should be spouses and family members as well, because the individual elected official also benefits from their income. So however you got to craft it.
Mr. Mayor, I got a question. Go ahead.
No, no. I guess my question would be, I'm not sure that would even be legally possible to expand it to a family or a spouse or a sibling or something within a family.
Well, I think you could if you added, have no financial gain from a cannabis business.
I would just say I'm not comfortable expanding it beyond what the state drafted. And we do have a plethora of conflicts of interest laws and regulations that cover a financial interest when someone's making a decision. So that covers a lot of this stuff on its own.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Vice Mayor.
I have a, why not, well, you brought up real estate, and why not real estate? I mean, anything can come before the council. I'm a little confused why are we focusing on cannabis? I mean, the Brown Act is pretty clear that you can't screw around. Why did the state focus on it? Can you explain that, what their motivation was? And why is it cannabis and not other businesses?
I think the state focused on it just here in, related to people who are doing enforcement and that kind of thing, just to set up one more conflict of interest regulation. So you kind of just add this to the pile that we have with the Political Reform Act and the contract ones. They just wanted to be clear, let's just not let them hold permits if they're in the enforcement decision. The truth is, if you're starting to go down that path, you recuse yourself anyway.
Yes.
But they're just saying, no, you can't even hold a permit, recusal or not. There's no legislative intent.
No, I don't quite, yeah. I mean, I can understand why.
To look at, because it's a regulation.
Why, somebody who's doing regulations on a regular basis, that's part of their job, I can understand that they'd say, "Listen, we don't want, you know, we don't want to have this problem." But aren't we getting into kind of a monkey thing here? I mean, we're talking about somebody's spouse and their, you know.
No.
What if you have a partner, but they're not a spouse? And what about your brother-in-law that you still, you know? The whole thing seems to me much of a muchness, frankly. We have the Brown Act, and it's pretty clear that if you're an elected official, you should not be, if you have a financial interest, you should not be messing around or, and it usually, people usually who are honest apply this pretty strictly, you know, if their spouse is going to open up a business that they have control over. Most people are very cautious about violating the Brown Act, because it's so obvious. I mean, it doesn't take a lot, you know. I feel like we're beating it to death. I really do.
Okay, I'd like to go ahead and open this up for public input.
I just have a couple comments. Can you clarify exactly by elected official, how, is it just an elected official in the city, or if it's an elected official that is outside of the city, say in the county that wants to come in and be a part of a cannabis business?
We don't really have jurisdiction over any other elected officials, so it would just be our city council or our appointed officials, like planning commissioners.
So any other elected official who has an interest in a cannabis business could come in and go through the RF process or RFP process, or apply for whatever they wanted to?
Sure, because they're not involved in, like this state reg says, the enforcement or regulation of the cannabis industry within the city.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. And secondly, I have to disagree with you, Mr. Walter. I think that including the spouses or siblings is reaching. Honestly, I mean, Sean benefits from me tattooing, and I tattoo half the city. So, I mean, how would that, by that logic, I think it's reaching, honestly. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to remind you, and I think you all are aware, of AB 1234, which just already addresses this issue. You can't have any financial or perceived financial interest yourself or anybody in your close family that would benefit from this. So I think that questions already been answered.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, council, thank you. Mr. Cox, appreciate your comments. You're right on. So what you're proposing here is that we throw the government code 1099, Brown Act, those don't apply anymore. Councilmember Walter, now I'm speaking specifically to you.
Yeah.
My previous comments were directed at the entire council.
Sean, you speak to the full council, please.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, thank you.
Previous, Mr. Walter had alleged that I was coming at him particularly about the issue of bias and of favoritism, and I want to be clear that I was not. That was a general message for the entire council. If I could, please do address Councilmember Walter. I do, sir. Wholeheartedly agree with you, but you better do it to every business, because if you're doing it just for cannabis, I think your bias and your favoritism is right out there, sir.
Thank you. You had a comment, Councilmember Walter?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, I feel that by putting this in the cannabis ordinance, it just makes a statement. You can ask half the people in this room what AB 1234 is, and they wouldn't know. They wouldn't know to go look it up. But right here, five or six lines stating that if you're an elected official in the city of Cloverdale, or you're an appointee of the city of Clover, by the city council, you cannot have a vested interest in the cannabis business. And the reason I say that is because it's so lucrative, that the temptation is there, as far as I'm concerned.
Thank you.
Hi there. Mark Lynn, Cloverdale. I find it particularly annoying when people do not respect the exact language. Let me read that to you. "No elected or appointed official from the state or its political subdivisions may be a permit holder if their duties involve enforcement or regulation." What you're doing here is regulating, you're discussing regulation. I've witnessed it many times. So, to be clear on what a subdivision is, and this is from United States Government's Social Security Administration. A political subdivision is a separate legal entity of a state which usually has specific governmental functions. The term ordinarily includes a county, city, town, village, school district, and in many states, sanitation, utility, reclamation, drainage, flood, blah, blah, blah. So therefore, each and every one of you are members of a political subdivision.
Actually, in California, we're not. In California, counties are political subdivisions. The state law is pretty clear. Cities are municipal corporations. We're incorporated. We're not a subdivision of the state. The state had nothing to do with creating cities. So California's a little different. That's language that might apply in other states or with federal agencies, but in California, cities are municipal incorporations. We're different.
It looks like the federal government may disagree with you, but that's okay, because I think that you also need to look at the intent. And as Mr. Cox, you know, has let you know, the intent is that there is no perceived, what's the word, conflict of interest. And that's really, really important. So move forward.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to address city council?
I am totally against putting the city council on this and denying them to be permit holders, their families, their, I mean, you're telling people that could be running for council, if they have a business, they have to, you know, sell their business before they can run for council. First, you take out the whole commercial district, then you take the TOD specific to the Quonset Hut, and you're changing all that, denying permits in that area, and now you're saying that people that have dispensaries or have anything to do with cannabis, that are running for council, that are staff of the city, can't have cannabis business. I just think it's horrible what you guys are even talking about.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to address the city council on this item?
Hi, John again. I'm not sure that I can support this idea as it stands. I don't think it's the greatest of ideas. And if you start carrying it over to elected officials for the city of Cloverdale, how far do you go with that? Do you take it to elected officials for the school districts? Do you take it, you know, and somebody else brought up county officials and things like that? So I think this one is going to be a really difficult one to sort of structure and swallow. And I think primarily, I think we're all aware of why this came up, because of one of the council members having an interest in the Quonset Hut. And I'm not sure that it's really fair to penalize her or any future people. I think that there were some bad decisions made, and I think that if you use, you know, the framework that you're setting for future stuff here, that those decisions, you know, they'll be better in the future, and I don't think it'll happen again, and I don't think you'll need something like this. Thanks.
Thank you.
Hello again, Erin Gore. I actually oppose this idea of banning council from owning licenses. I think there needs to be a clear RFP process, but I believe that you need strong business leaders on the council, and by eliminating the cannabis industry from potential future council or city-appointed positions, you might actually be eliminating some strong value-added business members who could really evolve your council. You wouldn't do this in construction, you wouldn't do this in pharmaceuticals, you wouldn't do this in the wine industry, and you will permit a tasting room, and you would never ban a wine industry professional from sitting on council. So I think those same standards should apply to the cannabis industry, and I think you should follow the ethic clause that you already have and have strong permit processes in place for how you grant permits, so there isn't a conflict of interest. But I don't think you should eliminate it as a blanket statement, because I feel that's prejudicial against our industry. Thank you.
Thank you. Please hold your, please hold your applause. Thank you. Okay?
Good evening, mayor and council. My name is Paul Brenn, and I am a city resident. You know, I also am against singling out any particular business that people cannot be involved in and still serve on city council. I really think the problem here is and has already been the failure to recuse. And just as Councilmember Walter pointed out, anybody can have a vested interest in any kind of business in this community, and we want business people serving on our city council. So I think it's just important that we not be loosey-goosey about recusals. And I think if somebody has been on city council and has been involved in the development of something that is personally going to enrich them and not recuse themselves, I think that's when we say they should not have that particular business. Because what they can do is they can quit their position to go into this business, but they've already set themselves up. And so I think we just really need to pay attention to FPPC rules and recusals. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening again, Eric Neal. I think it's a slippery slope to start in on cherry-picking particular businesses that city council people cannot be involved in. I think back to Jack Dimonakelli, who served on this council and was a local realtor in town, and probably a lot of issues that came up in front of the city council had to do with real estate-type issues. And if you had had this kind of rule in place, he would not have been able to either have his business or be on the city council, which wouldn't be fair. I also think if you're going to insist on pursuing this, that like the land use argument that you grandmother, so to speak, in the Quonset Botanical, because to change horses in midstream isn't fair to that person. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to address the city council on this item? Okay, seeing none, I'm going to close the public input, bring it back to council. We'll start with Councilmember Walter, and then Vice Mayor Russell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. John Lampard, I just want to clarify that this came up because this is what the state is now doing, and we kind of look at what the state does for some guidance. Because of the perception out there, when the ordinance was first written, that there may be some recusals that should have happened sooner rather than later, I thought this would be a good idea, and quite frankly, I support it. But it's not against any particular council member. I just think from a transparency standpoint, with the lucrative cash business that this industry is, I think it's important, so.
Thank you. Vice Mayor.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. I agree with the folks who speak of slippery slopes and also of the law as it exists. We have a law called the Brown Act. It's quite clear, and anybody with any common sense knows exactly what it is, and we all know what it is. This is something that may apply to the state, because it's an ongoing job that people are doing, perhaps involved with regulations where money and various enforcement issues come. City council members, planning commissioners, they know what the rules are, and if they violate those rules, then they have to live with the consequences. But I look at this, and I think, where does this end? If I were in the real estate business, if I were in any business, the first thing I'd say is, well, I'm not going to get involved in running for council. I don't even sure I should support anybody, because somebody could accuse me of trying to get favoritism. This is not the healthy way. We have laws, as former mayor and council member Bob Cox pointed out, we have a law that takes care of this. I don't mean to speak for you, but I'm paraphrasing, and I agree with you absolutely. We have laws, let's adhere to them and not worry about singling out a particular business, because I don't know where this ends. I really don't.
Thank you. Councilmember Bagby.
You know, I'm very torn about this issue, because...
You know, I'm very torn about this issue because I really, it does come down to intent. And I think that at the state level, I completely understand why they're going in this direction, and it's to protect staff from being pressured by either an appointed or an elected person. And it is a very sensitive business. It's different. It's a different business because of the inability for cannabis businesses to do banking because of federal law. It's a cash business. So, it's a very difficult issue for me. But I also reach back to, you know, one of the people who was one of the best resources for us when we were first starting out was Jamie Carr, who's a planning commissioner for the city of Shasta Lake. And she's somebody who clearly conducts herself professionally. She's a great businesswoman, and she's also a great resource for the cannabis industry, and she was a great resource for us. So, I find myself a bit torn because we do have AB 123. We do have FPPC regulations, but I don't think that they were followed. So I guess, you know, what it comes down to is, do we need an extra rule to get us over the hump before this business comes out of the dark? And I have to err on the side of being inclusive to cannabis professionals. Right now, it is different. There's just, you know, there's just no way that you can get around it. Right now, the business is different because it's a cash business. However, we need more people to run for council, not fewer. We need more people to want to serve on the planning commission, not fewer, and we need the expertise of that industry. You know, when I was on the planning commission, I had the pleasure of serving with Court Menzel, and he's a local engineer. And when an issue came before him that, where he had a financial interest, he consistently and professionally recused himself. And I expect nothing less from our appointed and our elected officials. So, you know, while I would, if it doesn't work out again, I would be willing to relook at this regulation. I have to err on the side of, let's do better going forward. And let's include people who are members of a legal statewide industry and make sure that we include them as a pool of talent for elected and appointed positions.
Thank you. Please hold the applause. Thank you. You know, I'm kind of torn between it as well because I do know, you know, when you recuse yourself, it's really up to each of the individuals to do that. The city has a city attorney's staff. The city council cannot make somebody recuse themselves under the current system. So it's an honor system, and certainly they're accountable. If the FPPC determines that you should have recused yourself and you did not, they can take action. You can go to jail, literally. However, it takes a complaint and an investigation, but it doesn't really, that doesn't happen overnight. I guess the moral of the story is they are in a position to make decisions that could impact the city, and it's an honor system that they're going to do the right thing and recuse themselves at the right time. And there's no recourse if people say, I don't think so-and-so should be up there addressing that. I think they have a vested interest, but they choose not to recuse themselves. That's the way it is, unfortunately. So that's the downside. I do know Sebastopol, as well as Jamie. Sebastopol had a gentleman that was on the council for at least four years. I worked on several boards that he also served on, and he was the mayor there. And he ran a medical marijuana distribution in the city of Sebastopol and did a commendable job. It was never a problem. So, I see the upside. It works. It really gets down to the individual, and it gets down to the, do we have the ability to make sure everybody does the right thing? And the answer is no. It's up to the individual to do the right thing. And we cannot take action to force them. So that's the part I'm torn about. You know, I'm leaning towards, it is a legal business. Once they're permitted and operable, and if they choose to run, I don't see a problem with that. I do have a problem if they're already elected and they want to establish a business and they participate in the conversation. And so that's kind of where I'm at on it, so, yeah. Please hold your applause. Any other comments from council before we hold the council and where we're going to go here? Okay, so what would you like to see happen here?
Well, you know...
Would you like to move forward with that?
Well, you know, I'd like us to keep an eye on it, depending on what wording comes out from Sacramento on it. But apparently, my fellow council members are comfortable with it the way it is and not having that in there, so that's fine.
Are you good with that, Melanie, for now? I think it needs to stay as an, something to be reviewed as we review this more frequently. It needs to be looked at, but I think at this point, I think... It would also be helpful if we could request an opinion from the Attorney General on whether or not, because it is unclear, does this cover city-elected officials or not? And I think we should get an opinion from the state Attorney General, whether it may actually be a mute issue. He or she may say yes or no, and then we would know. So, thank you. You good with that?
That's fine, yeah, as long as we, you know, don't set terrible messages to business people.
So we'll leave it alone for now and take another look at it the next time we do an update on the ordinance. Okay? So we'll move on to issue number nine.
Okay, council, issue number nine is, I think, maybe one of the more simpler issues. It's really just authorizing staff to make some minor administrative revisions and cleanups to the ordinance as indicated in the presentation. Staff would be in a position to present those changes to the council in a red-line format so you could see what those cleanups are. There's just minor various revisions throughout the ordinance that we'd like to just be, with your approval, direction, be able to undertake and bring it back to council.
Okay, we're all good with that. Thank you. So do you have the next step slide?
Yes.
So let's kind of talk through a quick best guest timeline as you go through this. I know there's a lot of work to be done.
Okay, let me cover the next steps. Obviously, tonight, we reviewed and discussed the nine issues that were presented to the council, and council provided directions to staff regarding possible amendments to the cannabis ordinance. Our next step would be to revise the ordinance for review by city council, ultimately bring that back and check in with you on those proposed amendments so you could actually see them and review them. And with your concurrence from that perspective, again, reminding the council that this ordinance is part of your zoning ordinance. We would recommend that you refer to the planning commission for a recommendation. At that point, we have to determine, you know, if there's any need to do further review under CEQA. We think the previous CEQA document was pretty comprehensive, but we still want to just, you know, check in with that, with the existing environmental document. And then ultimately, bring that recommendation back to council with introduction of a formal updated or amended ordinance for your review consideration. And again, that would be generally done in a public hearing. At this time, we really need to look at the council's schedule for the remainder of the year and outline, you know, what that timeline is. I'm not prepared to just kind of give you a specific timeline at this point, but staff can certainly, particularly once we revise the ordinance, bring it back with a timeline that the council has that you can then review because we want to make sure we look at, you know, what the public hearing timelines are for review by the commission as well as by council.
Okay, questions from council? Good. Very good. Well, thank you. That completes item number eight. Thank you all for all your participation. Thank you. Okay, we're going to move on. We have subcommittee reports is the next item. We'll start with the, is Councilmember Brigham?
She's here.
Can we get her? Do we know where she's at?
She's in the back.
Don't electrocute yourself.
Okay, thank you. Okay, would you let the minutes show that Councilmember Brigham's back on the dais? We are now at subcommittee reports. Airport, we have our chair, Councilmember Bagby.
Our next meeting is October 2nd.
Thank you. Finance, administration, and police, our chair is Councilmember Brigham.
Our next meeting, the time has changed, so everybody should be aware of this. Instead of the usual time, it's going to be at 3:30. So, and we will be talking over the homeless issue. So, 3:30.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Planning and community development, we have our chair, Councilmember Bagby.
Our next meeting is October 16th at 4:00 p.m.
Thank you. Public works, our chair is Vice Mayor Russell.
Thank you. I had an excused absence from our most recent meeting. But our next one is November 27th. Is there something that we should be...
We did have a meeting today, Mr. Mayor, and it was rather extensive. Covered quite a few items, and I think I'm going to wait for the minutes to come out. So, you can read them when the minutes come out.
Thank you. Okay, joint city fire district, that would be myself. And our next meeting is October 8th at 5:30. It'd be at the fire district headquarters. And the last one is the joint city school district. That's also would be me. And our next meeting is to be determined. I think we have a date set, but I just don't have it here. So, we'll get that date to you. But it will be on the website for everybody that's watching. Okay? So now we're down to council reports. We'll start with Councilmember Bagby. Anything to report? That's it, not your written report?
I'll just add to my written report, just to let everyone know that if you're interested in attending, the Upper Russian River Managers Meeting is tomorrow at the Cloverdale Fire Protection District. And that starts at 4:30. It's anticipated to go to 6:30. And there may be some new information on the Potter Valley project there if you are interested.
Thank you. Councilmember Walter, anything?
Nothing, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I submitted my city council report, which is available. And I want to thank Linda for always taking my report late these days. I used to be so on time with this, and I'm afraid I'm not anymore. But I did want to point out, in addition to what I wrote, I was very pleased when I attended the Chamber of Commerce Evening Board Meeting as the city liaison that in addition to what I'm discussing in my report, the chamber voted to oppose Prop 6. The chamber board did, and voted unanimously, and I'm thrilled about that, particularly as the chair of San Juan County Transit. I also wanted to tell you that I have a hard copy of the general managers' report for SMART. This covers August and September. And you may want to pay a particular attention to the pages, which I believe are 23 to 33. You'll see them as you go through. They cover some of the problems that we have with our homeless population, which have been quite severe at times, and also some of the difficulties we've had with people who completely ignore the safety. I did want to point out that there was an accident and a death. It was ruled an accident. Our engineer sounded the horn as soon as he saw, that's my understanding, as soon as he saw the individual could do that, and it was in a quiet zone, so that the horn would have been something that you weren't used to hearing. Unfortunately, I believe the gentleman had earphones on, and I'm not sure that he heard the horn. But my understanding is that it's one of those tragedies. Nobody should be walking on a track.
Thank you. And our student liaison, my report's in there. Nothing to add to that, so it's in the packet. And our student liaison is absent, so there'll be no student liaison report tonight. Legislative report, anything to report? City attorney?
Nope.
Okay. City manager report?
Mayor, council, I just want to ensure that the council's aware of a workshop that PGE is going to be conducting on Wednesday, I mean, excuse me, Thursday, September 27th. This is in regards to their new wildfire safety operation program. Under this program, PGE, in severe conditions, may completely shut off power. There's a concern brewing that it may impact important municipal operations, particularly relative to life safety. But they're doing it to protect, under the mode of protecting property because of, you know, some of the impacts of the recent firestorm. They're holding a workshop from 2:00 to 4:00 p.m. at the Santa Rosa Oddfell's Hall in Santa Rosa, obviously, from 2:00 to 4:00. And then they're going to have Fall Ed up with an open house from 6:00 to 8:00. It's more of a community workshop. Council has been invited for that communication, and you're welcome to attend that workshop. You may provide some vital information about the...
Thank you, and I did respond to them. I have a REMH board meeting that same day, same time. I'll be up in Yucaya, so I won't be available to attend. So we'll be looking for an update from those that are able to attend. Hopefully, we'll have staff, at least a staff member who can attend. I'm not sure about... Yeah, we all have conflict meetings, but we do need to get the information. So, I would look forward to an update on that, maybe on our next meeting. Anything else, city manager?
That's it.
City attorney, report? Nothing to report? Okay. Council direction on future agenda items. Anything from anybody? Okay, seeing none, we're going to go ahead and adjourn to a regular meeting of the city council, which would be Tuesday, October 9th, for a closed session at 5:00 o'clock at City Hall Conference Room and public business session at 6:00 o'clock here at the Performing Arts. I want to thank staff for the detailed report and all the work. Thank members of the public for being here. We are adjourned. Thank you.
Sean, don't go too far.